Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 6, 2025, meeting of the Jersey City Zoning Board of Adjustment. This meeting is held in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Beasley, if you can take attendance at this time?
Yeah, so I see Commissioners Ablikki.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
And Chair Coyle.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any sunshine announcements that you need to share with us at this time?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been provided to the Bergen Record, Ellis Belito, as well as posted with the city clerk.
Okay. Can we please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Tonyanne, can you please swear in any staff members that are present tonight? Okay. Okay, Mr. Beasley, is there any correspondence that you need to share as well?
Yeah, so under, on the agenda of number six, under adjournments, the first item listed as A, Z 20-043, 201 Newark Avenue, is requesting to carry to a special meeting, March 27. And item B, under adjournments as well, case number Z 2024-0066, 16 Dwight Street, is requesting to carry to April 10, regular meeting. And item C, case number Z 2024-0074, address 137 Arlington Avenue, is also requesting to carry to April 10, regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. So our first order of business will be case Z 2025-0003. But before we begin, I just have two announcements. When it comes to the public section of the meetings where we have comment, all comments will be held to three minutes for each of those individuals who would like to speak. Also, we will have a stop time of 9:45. Security and the building is closed at 10 o'clock. So at 9:45, we will wrap up and have to hear the cases that were not heard this week at another time. And I'm sure Mr. Beasley will help reschedule those. Okay, so without further ado, it is case Z 2025-003. It's a site plan extension, and the attorney is Vincent Verderamo. Good evening.
Is this on?
Yeah.
So I'm Theodore Richard. Unfortunately, Vincent Verderamo is very sick today. I'm from.
His office?
Yes.
Okay.
And yeah, so unfortunately.
Does he have to be sworn in? Okay.
What's that?
Yeah.
I'm good?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So unfortunately, Nick Flor was unable to act. The, yeah, so this, this committee, this board, granted a variance back in March of 2021 for this 67 Clifton Place. And unfortunately, he was unable to act on it at that time. And he's now able to act on it, and he would like an extension so that he can proceed with it.
Okay. Do the, the committee have any, the commissioners have any questions concerning this? Is there anyone from the public that has any comments to make? Okay, no questions? Yes.
Excuse me, yes. Just wanted out to applicant's team already willing to accept the conditions that were, conditions of approval given from the original site plan approval and variance.
Yes.
Then yes, staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Beasley, can you take?
Yes, motion to approve. Commissioners Ablikki.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Barron.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
And Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next case is Z 2025-0013, Site Plan Amendment for 80 Broadway. Okay. Hi.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns, appearing this evening on behalf of the applicant, Avenue West Side Square LLC.
May I approach? I have a question. It's a technicality. I think it's appropriate to present this at this time.
Where's?
I need the advice of our attorney.
It's regarding your notice this evening. On this case? That is correct.
Oh, okay. Well, let's hear it then.
Yes.
Can I present it to the board to review?
And you were the one who should have gotten notice?
No, my neighbors did. And we're having a meeting tomorrow to discuss this for the meeting for the ninth. And somehow, it's not going to work if we're having a hearing tonight.
Oh.
I know, I, I properly noticed this application for everyone within 200 feet. I have a tax assessor's list here. I uploaded my affidavit of publication and mailed it to the portal.
Sorry, this is your notice.
Correct.
This is not his notice.
Correct. It's a notice that he supplied to one of the property owners within 200 feet.
But not you.
Not me.
So he has no standing to be here tonight to challenge and challenge a notice that he didn't receive. He's not a lawyer.
Well, if.
But he's saying that a notice went out from your office to the neighborhood saying we're having a meeting on March 9.
That's a couple of days from now.
Isn't today?
Everybody within.
Day is the sixth.
Can I see that?
Well, if you look at the entire notice, it says I'm right on the first. There is, it's a typo. I acknowledge there's a typo in this notice. But if you look, please take notice that on Thursday, March 6, 2025, it's on the first line.
That is correct. And it says if there's any objections, to voice your concern on March 9.
Is this what was published as well in the newspaper?
Yes, it was.
Don't you think it would be better to?
Well, perhaps. But I would also suggest that this board has already established jurisdiction. We are on an administrative amendment here. You know, so the board has already heard testimony on this. So the, the, the notice is essentially, you know, a belt, a belt and suspenders situation because notice, you know, jurisdiction has already been established here. And the amendments, the administrative amendments that we're seeking are interior revisions.
Objections or objections? Have they noted to you?
That's correct. Based on, based on the, the, the application that's pending before the board. It's not a, it's not a, you know, there's no variances here. There's.
There's no way an objection could be heard because the notice is improper.
The notice, the notice says the hearing date.
And the notice says any objections? Let's have the meeting March 9 and voice your concerns.
Please come up and state your name for the record, sir.
Why don't you identify yourself? Because I don't think you've done that.
Michael Manzo, 82 Wright Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
In both of the points, Chuck, you know, your point, Mr. Pizzillo, is that you didn't have to notice. You probably didn't. But however, you did.
Did notice, and you're sending out the wrong notice. And so he has a point. And so the, the real question becomes, wouldn't it behoove you to put this off till the next meeting? So everybody is here on April 10, if that's the next meeting? You don't have to renotice if we're just putting it out today that it's April 10. Well, that'll save you that expense.
No, I agree with that, that on the expense side of things.
Just trying to save you a problem. I'm not saying he's going to win. You know, let's assume everything goes your way. The board approves this. He appeals. And then the first, that's going to hold you up. And the next thing you know is that some, some judge might say, well, you know what? What was the harm of carrying it to April 10 because you sent out a notice to the community? The community may have a problem with this.
100%.
I don't know if they do or they don't, but they might.
Well.
Better be safe than sorry, don't you think?
Of course, of course, but.
Did you start this off by saying belt and suspenders?
You did.
Or did I?
Well, the, the, the fact of the notice, yes.
Yeah.
You know, because it's, it's not required for an administrative amendment.
I know that. I understand that.
So it's, it's the policy of this board, the other boards. So an administrative amendment is not required to be noticed. I did it out of an abundance of caution. Obviously, there, there, I, you know, I have no re, I can't dispute that there is a typo in it. But I think jurisdiction has been established already. Notice is not required for the application. And I, I think we can proceed.
But you did send a notice that carried it, right? And there could have been people here that would like to voice their opinions tonight and are not here because they're saying to speak on the ninth.
But I, I acknowledge that, Madam Chair. However, Mr. Manzo's here. And so anyone who got a notice could have still came, regardless of whether it says the ninth on the last portion. The, 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 the hearing is the hearing, right? The date is on there. The date for the tonight's hearing is there. The fact that the line, and it's a form line in every notice that says any person who wants to potentially appear and provide testimony or put testimony on the record can show up. The, the, the notice is statutorily compliant as is. It has the date of the hearing. It has the time of the hearing. It has the address of the matter pending before the board and what's being proposed before the board. The fact that there's one typo on the bottom of the notice should not invalidate the entirety of it. We know it was received.
But you're presuming that, that somebody who's reading this is presuming that the first line is correct and the second line is wrong.
With all due respect.
What if the opposite? What if they think that the meeting is March 9? And the first one's a typo.
Right.
The specific instruction is if there are objections to come to the meeting at March 9. They wouldn't be here tonight.
It's not specific instructions. It's just.
The, the, the line says, any person interested in this application will have the opportunity to address the board at the hearing of March 9.
Correct.
I see that, yes.
Okay.
I acknowledge that, but I don't think that invalidates this. I don't.
Well, let's put it this way. You know, in my opinion, as an attorney, I would say you better be safe than sorry and postpone it, but that's my opinion. What do you, what is it, what is the board's pleasure?
Let me just ask you a question. So procedurally, for the application itself, there's nothing that would have bearing on the merits of whatever's in the application itself because his argument is, the attorney's argument is that it's okay, whatever. The problem is, however, you're leaving it open for after this meeting. So it's really their thing. We're not necessarily, we shouldn't be affected by the vote because of the notice. If he's saying that it wasn't necessary, and you sort of agree. It's really the fact that whatever we do, you're potentially leaving it wide open for a challenge. So the risk is on the applicant. That has nothing to do with our vote, per se, in terms of the merits of the case.
Well, I, I'm.
I'm actually asking, that's, is that correct?
Let's put it this way. The risk is never on the board.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
We just make a determination, then it's up to them to appeal.
Correct.
But, but.
And that's what will probably happen.
The line is, is that, you know, are we going to put the public at risk to say that, you know, maybe a lot of people are going to come? I have no idea what this application is about.
Okay. So, so my suggestion as one, as the one board member is that we postpone this until, and notice is done correctly and the dates are noticed correctly to the individuals. That's my suggestion.
Well, we could, we don't have to do that. We can carry this case.
Carry it.
And, and you don't have to renotice.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Manzo is here. You're telling people on the ninth if you want to send out another note, you know, another letter.
But, but aren't we running into the same issue? Because if there is someone that has an objection who's not here tonight and that is not communicated to that person by Mr. Manzo, or if the individual does not watch the YouTube video or check the action agenda that this was carried, isn't it the same concern that Mr. Manzo is raising right now that we're going to run into in the next hearing?
Well, because the vote wouldn't have taken place yet. At least you'll allow for the input and then have a vote based on the input and facts exchange. You want to vote now and then have a potential objection or change? And then you have to take another vote anyway afterwards? That doesn't sound right to me.
No, what, what Mr. Pizzillo was saying is that since I'm saying that we just carry this for a date certain and he doesn't have to renotice to save his applicant that expense, he's saying, well, then what's the difference? Because if I'm not renoticing, if people are going to show up on the ninth, there's nothing on the ninth, he's going to have the same thing. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to suggest that if, if, if somebody's, somebody who's going to come here on the ninth, they're going to find out that there was no hearing. It was the hearing on the 6th. And then they're going to say, well, let's look at what happened the 6th. And they're going to say it was carried to April 12.
Understood.
April 10, whatever the date is, but.
But if they don't do that, then.
Well, they don't.
The person's going to come and say the same thing.
No, if they don't do that, they're going to be here the ninth. And when they come here the ninth, they're going to find out there's no meeting. And then they're going to find out why. And then they're going to say, well, a little due diligence will find out that it was supposed to be for the 6th and it wasn't carried, it wasn't noticed the right way. So it was carried to April 10.
Yeah, I.
I'm just trying to save you.
No, I understand that. And, and what I'm trying to do, these revisions are so minor. This is a project that's under construction. There's been.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Pizzillo.
Years of issues.
You know, you know what I'm saying? In effect, is that sometimes when you come in with a belt and suspenders, probably was better if you didn't have any, either a belt or a suspenders. And you could just, you know, put the amendment the way it was.
Understood. And, and, and the reason I sent the notice is to give the community the opportunity.
I know.
And, and the fact is, there is a member of the community here. The notice was sent in ample time. My number is there on the bottom. I didn't get any call saying which, what's right, what's wrong. So, you know.
But the member of the community, the member of the community came because the notice, he didn't get one, and the dates were different. That's why he's here.
I under, I understand that. But he doesn't have standing to challenge the notice because he's not within 200 feet.
No, we're having a meeting tomorrow in the community.
Okay, but he's not, he, he doesn't have standing to challenge the defectiveness potentially of my notice because he was never supposed to get notice in the first place because he doesn't live within 200 feet of the property.
I get it. But so, all right, so let's, we could, we can go back and forth like a ping pong game all night. So what's, what's the board's pleasure?
Okay, let's, can I have a, can I have a vote? Eric, can you take a vote to, on this matter to postpone until the next meeting?
Yes.
So I think what he's saying is that, and just so we're clear, that you told him he doesn't have to renotice or anything else.
Right.
And I think what he's saying is if he comes back on the 10th and you don't renotice, that people show up saying, well, nobody notified me about the 10th. There's no obligation for that.
Right.
So that's done. Nobody shows up, too bad.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's it.
Exactly.
So, because it's on record now. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, absolutely. That's what we're saying. Okay.
So the next suitable meeting for this application would actually be April 24.
Okay.
Why do we have to carry it that long? Why, just squeeze it in April 10.
We can squeeze it in April 10.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We can squeeze it in April 10, so.
List it first, so he doesn't have to.
Okay.
Okay. But that's the board's pleasure. Is that the board's pleasure?
We can make a motion to carry to April 10, right?
I have a motion to carry this till April 10. Can I get a second?
Commissioners Ablikki. Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Barron.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
No.
Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Six in favor, one, no.
Thank you. Thank you.
See you then. I don't know where, right, oh, here it is.
Okay.
Vinnie, do we need to mark that as evidence?
Excuse me?
The evidence that Mr. Manzo presented, does that have to be, that has to be marked and filed away?
Okay. Can you take, yeah, can you take a picture of it so that he can have it back?
Yeah. All right.
Check the picture, make sure it's good.
It's good, it's good. So this should be marked as.
Do we have to?
A1, if I'm correct?
Yeah, we can mark this into evidence as.
A1.
But we can all.
Picture's fine. Thank you, Mr. Manzo.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, our next case is Z 2023-0019. It's 136 Delaware Avenue. An amended final site plan. Mr. Harrington?
Yes. Good evening, for the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley. On behalf of the applicant, I do have the public notices that I can provide to Mr. La Paglia. This is a case that has been.
The right dates on them?
Yes. This, this is a case that has been carried sometime.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so why don't we, we have this notice affidavit, proof of service, and notice of publication? So why don't we mark this as A1?
This is case. I did that. It was the extension which we did. Yeah, it's done.
Just the remark.
Yeah.
Okay. So wait one second. I'm sorry. Good, okay. So I just want to give a little bit of a background on, on the project that's before you tonight because it's, it's, has somewhat of a history. It was a phased project when it was originally approved, meaning that the first, the first phase of it was the adaptive reuse of the convent that's located just behind St. Al's off Kensington. And that, that building has been renovated and, and it was sold as condominium units. So that Phase 1 is complete. This is Phase 2, which was a brand-new construction ground up that was approved as part of the same approval some years ago. So that's what we're here before you tonight for, is to change that somewhat. We, it has been adjourned a number of times because we have been working with the community and the neighbors on a, on a number of issues. We have made some changes to try to address their concerns. I believe they're, they're here tonight, too. And I wanted to point out a few. Well, first, the, the overall, what we're doing is, is we're essentially, we are reducing the parking. And the initial approval had below-grade parking. So we're going, we're proposing to remove that. The reason for that is we have a shared parking agreement with St. Saint Aloysius and the Grammar School. And they don't need as many parking spaces as they thought when we got the initial approval. So as a result of that, we could reduce the number of parking. I believe it went from 85, now the proposed is 52. So now you're, you're just at grade. The unit count stays the same. We have reconfigured the building somewhat. You'll see during the presentation that one portion of the building bumped out a little bit at the, at the ground floor. And that's a really direct result of we need the drive aisle space for, for the parking. We have an area where we have stacked chair parking within the garage, but it's open air. That was originally closed. But in working with the, the neighbors, we, we took the, the closed instruct, closed structuring out. Now it's open air because that was located directly behind what I'm referring to as a chapel unit. There's a, there's a, the chapel that was part of the convent was converted into a condominium unit. So that building structure would have been directly next to it. So that is now open air, be, next to that building. We've also then pushed back the building in the most recent amendments. And our architect can take you through this in, in more specifics. But we pushed it back about three feet so that it's off, off the lot line. We've removed, not removed, we've moved the, the rooftop deck further away from the convent towards Gauthier. It's Gauthier Street or Avenue, I forget. But that's, you know, kind of the, the long and short of it. And, and Mr. America can walk you through that. But there are a few things that I wanted to state on the record that we talked to the community about. I wanted to make clear because in our discussions with them, we said, we agree to that. One of the reasons that, that we pushed this off was there was an, an issue about a transformer, the placement of a transformer, whether it was going to be partly in our property, partly on the condominium property, and whether there's a prior agreement or easement. The application before you tonight has nothing to do with that transformer. Where our proposal is to have the transformers on utility poles. So that, I just want to make it clear for, for the public and for the board, that's not something we're asking for tonight. It's not part of our application. So in the event a, of the approval and in the event PSENG says, I'm sorry, we can't put it on the poles, then we will have to come back to this board to seek that approval. And we can't get that approval now because there's certain calculations that the, the architect needs to do during construction to see, you know, where, where that works. So I just want to make that clear going forward. Also, we've agreed to have a reciprocal access easement with the, the neighbors, and that's the condominium building, the convent. Because of the proximity of the two properties and our, our lot line will be close to the chapel unit. So we want to make sure that they have access when, when they need it. We're also providing, you'll, you'll see, and you're, you'll see as part of the garage, we're providing for a fence that can be opened in the event they need to have access through our fence in addition to their side yard. So we will have an access agreement for, with reasonable notice. And in the event an immediate access is, is agreed, is, is needed an immediate access is, is agreed, is, is needed, as a result of an emergency, that would be acceptable, too. So I wanted to make sure those, those are on, on the record. Let me see, I think those are the major points, but, you know, if I missed anything, when the community comes up, I'll, you know, certainly address those at that time. Oh, one other thing is, yeah, they asked us to, to confirm that none of our drainage is going to be, be directed towards their property, we're not allowed to do that in the first instance, so we just wanted to confirm that on the record, that's not going to happen. In the event we need to move any wiring that, into the chapel unit or otherwise in a convent, that would be our responsibility to take care of, and to take care of it, you know, expeditiously. And I think that's it, there is, there's one other gate issue that, that we're, we'll have to talk offline with them. But with that long-winded summary, I'll bring, bring up our architect, so he can walk you through the project.
Sure, Ahmed Amara, E.M.A.R.A. I do.
Mr., Mr. Amara has been.
Before this.
Yes.
His license is in effect, and we still accept his credentials, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And before you begin, if we could mark this as A2, your slide deck for, for the presentation?
Great, thank you. Please email the presentation to staff.
I will.
Thank you.
You got it.
Sorry, I just advised Mr. Amara and Mr. Harrington that they should email this piece of evidence to staff.
Alright, good evening, I'll take you through the presentation, I know Chuck did a good job summarizing it, so this is just going to be, I'm going to be much faster than him. So. Okay, let me do this. Just to remind everybody of the location, it's, it's on the corner of Gauthier Ave and Delaware Avenue, that's the site right there. The school is the bigger building behind us, and the church, and then on this side here on Delaware Ave is the convent and the chapel unit, which is down here. Which is, that's, that's Phase 1 that Chuck referred to. Again, this is just a 3D of the site, so you can get a visual, that's the school and the church, and then this is the convent and chapel unit right behind us here. This is the updated site plan, just to confirm, the entrance to the building is on Delaware, which was originally designed to be on Delaware, but when I say originally, I'm talking about the prior approval, because, just to, also to clarify to the board, there's a prior approval, and then we submitted an application with an amendment, that amendment had then been amended a couple of times after talking to the neighbors. So last time we came, you mentioned, Chair, that we needed to go back and submit the drawings, so the drawings that are submitted now are the, I'm going to refer to those as the amended drawings, and then the original drawings were the ones that were previously approved. So the previous approval had the entrance for the residential building on Delaware, which we're keeping, the entrance for the parking garages was also on Delaware, which we're also keeping. And, and then what we did, we put the, again, the previously approved plans along with the proposed plans, so on the left side of the screen is the proposed plans, and the right side was the previously approved, you'll see that the entrance for the garage is almost at the same location, and then there is a ramp in the middle of the garage to take you down, which is no longer be, is needed, as Chuck mentioned, because the 25 spaces for the church now went down to 10, and they're shared parking spaces. The, this is the typical, this is the second-floor plan, on the right side was what was previously approved, on the left side again is what's proposed, you'll notice that we overlaid, so the red dashed line on the left side is the footprint for the previously approved building. This area we labeled as, on the right side is labeled as public patio area, so this used to be public for everyone in the building to be able to come to, so if you lived on the third or fourth or fifth floors, you could come down elevator or the stairs and through the hallway, take a door out and be in that area. In the, in the current proposal, that space is a private green area that, that can only be used by the tenants of the units that are facing that green area. So that's, that's a, that's a big change, because now, instead of having 54 units being, have access to that space, this is only those five or six units that have access to that space. That's designed specifically as a green area, so we don't anticipate a lot of people spending actually time on the green area, because behind those, you'll see, we're labeling private patios, so each unit now has a private patio, and then there is basically a green roof in front of them. In terms of the footprint, as our attorney mentioned, the footprint on the left side of the, is, is the, is the proposed, current proposal, on the right side is the previously approved, and the overlay of the red line, you'll see that the building actually was larger and came down towards the school, and we pulled that back, we thought this was more appropriate for a residential building to just step away, it's not too close to the school's windows and playground. These are the typical upper floors, so this would be the third, fourth, and fifth floors, they have, they, they match the same layout, so I won't, you know, talk about this too much, but it's basically, again, that comparison between the two footprints. The roof deck in the previously approved as well reached the back towards the chapel, so you can see it was basically at the, at the roof line or the parapet line, and then in the front, it was on Gauthier. In the, in the current proposal, on the left side of the screen, we've reduced that footprint to stay away from the, basically the visual from the street on Gauthier, and then we moved it away from the convent and the chapel building on the bottom of the screen. This is the area here that our attorney was referring to, so this, in one of the discussions and one of the iterations we did was a covered parking area, we removed it and we created this, we have this now as an open space, and I'll just go to the floor plan above that to show it. This is now an open, too below, this is open airspace, and, and the reason for this is to give access to the convent and, and the chapel unit, to access their building in need, and if, you know, if there's any need for maintenance or replacement or repairs of any sort. So under the building, this area here is parking, but it would be open, and I'm just going to go back one more time. So this is the space here between the two buildings, we would have a fence along this wall here and a fence along this wall here, this fence would have gates in it, or it would be a removable fence to allow for access for, for the buildings, basically, both ways. Why removable? Because the property line, basically the, the convent comes up to the, I'm sorry, the chapel unit comes up to the property line, and between the chapel and the building and the property line here is also just five feet. So in talks with our neighbors, we agreed to, to this area to basically have larger gates that would open to allow access if they're bringing in any machinery tools or somebody has to access it, which I think is, works for both of us. The setback that Chuck was mentioning, again, it was, it was in, in one of the iterations we did, the building came out to here at the property line for about maybe 30 feet, and now this is, and again, in discussions with the neighbors, we understood the concern, so we moved the building back, so this line is now set back from the property line. This is just a comparison between what was previously approved and what's proposed, you'll notice that all the numbers are, for the coverage, for the building coverage and the lot coverage are staying the same, the setbacks are staying mostly the same, the unit count is the, is the cha, is the, is the same, but the unit mix is different. We had no three bedrooms, and mostly one bedrooms and two bedrooms, we've added some three bedrooms, again, during our discussions with the neighbors, they wanted a more family-oriented building, and this is one of the changes that we made. These are the, this is the proposed design for the, the building. So the building massing, as I showed before, stayed largely the same, the back is where the changes are, but the front, it went from red brick and stone to more of a panelized facade, I would say, just to break down the mass a little bit, and it doesn't look like one big, one color, one big finish. The lighting was also discussed with the neighbors, one of the comments, and, and we admittedly didn't update the renderings yet, but one of the comments was about the lighting on the cornice, they don't really want the cornice to be highlighted as much, since a lot of the buildings around them are lower density, so that's something we agreed to, and we would, we would remove that. The lighting along the sidewalk, that's something that we wanted, and the neighbors wanted, just for security, and, and lighting up the sidewalk, this is a view from Delaware side, and you'll see the garage and the building entrance right there. And this is a, the view from Gauthier Avenue. And with that, I conclude, if I missed anything, I mean, though, you already mentioned, there would be no stormwater runoff from our side to their property, certainly. The, one of the, one of the, I have to mention this, because I did, I see people in the crowd that we talked about this, we did agree with Lincoln Park Association that the, the roof deck would be, accommodate some of their gatherings, just prior notice, and the management team would allow them into the building to use that space. And I have to also mention that 126 Delaware, which is the convent building, they have parking in the building, and so those parking spaces would remain, that was part of the previous approval, they would remain with this approval, and they would be, those spaces would be labeled for them. The shared parking between the school and the, and, and the building is something that we worked with the school on, and I believe there is a representative of the school and church here today to speak about that as well. I think I've covered everything, if not, then I'm happy to take any, if not, somebody will probably correct me or something, and I'm happy to take any questions.
We'll hold questions till the end.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, that's, that's all we, we have tonight, we have our traffic engineer here, in the event there are any questions about that, but it's really, you know, it's all about the garage there, and then we'll defer to the board.
Okay, so at this time, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? Okay, I'll ask you to come up to the microphone, you'll be limited to three minutes. Commissioner Allen will time you, he'll let you know when you have one minute left, so you'll have to state your name, spell your name for, for Tony Anne.
Hi, Robin Alcock, A.L.C.O.C.K., 126 Delaware. I do. Good evening, I'm an owner of 126 Delaware, and as mentioned, our building is the former St. Aloysius convent, which is a 99-year-old structure, that's part of the West Bergen, East Lincoln Park Historic District. Want to bring the commissioner's attention to changes from the original 2016 site plan that I find to be a detriment. And those are the changes that were made to the ground-level footprint. There's been a reduction in the setback distances between our buildings. On our north side, it was reduced to five and a half feet from an original 10 feet in the 2016 plan. And on an eastern portion of our building, as you saw, there was previously an open space, but there's now just four inches between us and the proposed parking. The mostly rectangular footprint of the development now has that extra nose-jutting southward, and six cars are allotted to be parked there. That parking area is also mere inches from our historic masonry loggia, and on the opposite side of us, the St. Aloysius Catholic School, which is also a property of the Lincoln Park Historic District. As you know, the developer has chosen to remove that underground level of parking from their previous plan, and the 33 spaces that were contained there. And it now seems that they're seeking to expand the footprint to eke out as many spaces as possible on the ground level. I personally feel the need to push back on this choice, especially to swish, to squish six cars in a 30-foot-wide area, which is bound on three sides by historic properties with just inches of clearance. I do appreciate the many meetings that the developer's architect, Mr. Amara, held with our community, our association, and other owners. He thoughtfully presented compromises to address the HOA's concerns, which are reflected in tonight's plans. However, there wasn't a compromise on the subject of the ground-level footprint, and by extending parking into that section.
One minute remaining.
To completely walk around our condo building, it adds extra noise and extra burden to our maintenance to arrange for the moving of six cars and fencing. And what if there's a vehicle fire in that section? That's four inches from where I sleep at night, that section of the chapel unit is my primary bedroom. So I'm speaking in objection of this amendment change, not because I object to the long-awaited development of this land, but because I feel that this new construction building with its own giant lot. Should be making different choices with regards to the footprint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm William Hamill, I'm a member of St. Al's Church, H.A.M.I.L.L. I do. Good evening, I'm William Hamill, I'm a member of St. Aloysius Church, I'm currently one of two trustees of the parish, and a member of the Finance Council in both capacities, in an advisory role to the pastor, Reverend Juáncho de León, and the parochial vicar, Reverend Jesús Ramos. I'm also a graduate. Yes, Juáncho de León, J.U.A.N.C.H.O., de León, D.E.L.E.O.N., and Jesús Ramos, R.A.M.O.S. You're welcome. Okay, I'm also a graduate of the elementary school quite some time ago. I'm here tonight representing both the church, the parish, and the school, to voice our wholehearted support for the project. I have two letters written by the pastor and by the principal of the elementary academy, Mr. Jorge Rivera, R.I.V.E.R.A., dated in June of 2024, to our Ward B Councilwoman, Mira Prinz-Ardi, underscoring our support. They indicate the cooperation we've had from Mr. Peraza and his team, giving us updates about the project, answering our questions, and responding to our concerns, including, as you've heard, an agreement to allow shared parking for the staff and the teachers of our elementary school, and the letters indicate our support for that agreement. We do feel, as has been mentioned, that the project enhances safety and security in the neighborhood, we feel that the mix of units will encourage both singles, couples, and families, which we feel has the potential to.
One minute remaining.
Add members, both to our church community and to the school. So we look forward to this project moving forward. I'd like to ask the board if it would be possible for me to submit these letters as a part of the record of our support for the project, would that be appropriate?
It's normally not appropriate to submit letters from somebody who's not here. But we'll take your representation as to what they say, and that's good enough for now.
Fine. Again, these are letters written to the local councilwoman.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Lyons, I am a resident of 126 Delaware. L.Y.O.N.S., correct? I do. Hi, I am another owner in the Phase 1 building, the convent. First, I just want to say that I, I fully support my neighbor and wife's comments that preceded me, I also want to reiterate what she said about Mr. Amara and Mr. Harrington, who took time, especially after the previously scheduled zoning meeting, to meet with the community and talk to us in 126, and we appreciate a lot of the changes that they've made. I just wanted to expand a little bit on the question of the, the space between the chapel unit and the borders of this property. The chapel has a roof that is approximately 100 years old, it still has the, I believe, original copper Yankee gutters, the masonry work, for the most part, is original, it is a building that has, and I expect will continue to need, quite a bit of maintenance as a historic property in the historic district. This is one of the reasons we are so concerned about the setback and about the access to the exterior as it is required, and will continue to require maintenance to preserve the historic character of the neighborhood. While we appreciate the changes made, we are still concerned about, in reality, how practical this is going to be with this fence, with having to move the shared, the cars in the shared parking the way, if we need to repair, say, the slate and copper work that is around the back of the chapel, where the sacristy was, which was removed by the developer. And, and these are generally where we have been trying to find some common ground to assure us that we can do that work. We are still not 100% confident that this is going to be adequate for that.
One minute remaining.
One minute remaining.
But we, in the original plans, we did not think that this was going to be necessary because there was not going to be any extension into the back of the property towards the loggia between the school and the chapel unit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Ludwig, and I'm a owner in 126 Delaware Ave. Ludwig, L.U.D.W.I.G. Yeah, yes.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony about the given proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and you think that's the truth?
I do.
I will make it short and sweet. I, again, want to thank the architects and attorneys from Mr. Peraza for working with the board to make some changes to their initial plan to allow us some amount of ability to work on our building in the future. We are, but I also want to say that I support the comments of the other owners who have spoken here today. I still have reservations about our ability to manage our building going forward, and that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Kayla Burl. First name K.A.Y.L.A., last name B. as in boy, U.R.E.L.L.
Do you swear the testimony about the given proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and you think that's the truth?
I do. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the vice president of the Lincoln Park North Neighborhood Association, and I'm here tonight to represent our members and voice a few concerns regarding the proposed development on 136 Delaware. First, we would like to acknowledge the developer and his architect, Mr. Amara's efforts in engaging with the community. We appreciate that some of the concerns raised by residents have been addressed, such as the changes to the building's facade. Those modifications demonstrate a willingness to align the project more closely with the character of our neighborhood, and we do commend that effort. One thing that I didn't hear mentioned during the presentation might have been overlooked was the use of the glass that prevents bird strikes. So I'd just like to get that agreement on the record. However, despite these adjustments, a significant portion of our community remains deeply concerned about the overall scale and density of the proposal. Delaware Avenue is a quiet, narrow residential street primarily made up of one- and two-family homes and low-rise buildings. The proposed development, in terms of its height and bulk, feels out of proportion with the surrounding properties and risks disrupting the neighborhood's established character. We're also concerned about the added pressure this project would place on already strained infrastructure. Parking is limited, traffic flow is already challenged, and access for emergency services could be compromised. These issues are compounded by the development's proximity to local schools, where congestion during drop-off and pickup times is a regular concern. Introducing additional vehicles and disruptions to an area already dealing with heavy school-related traffic would exacerbate these problems and undermine the safety and quality of life for our residents. We also have reviewed the traffic study submitted as part of this proposal, and frankly, we find it unconvincing. Given the existing traffic challenges between Kensington and Duncan avenues, especially during school hours, we believe the study does not accurately reflect the real-world impact this development would have.
One minute remaining.
The anticipated traffic flow, as outlined in the study, does not take into account the cumulative effects of existing congestion, newly-installed bike lanes, and the additional strain of increased parking. In our view, the study underestimates the scale of the disruption this project could cause and fails to account for the broader concerns of the community. Additionally, we support our neighbors at 126 Delaware and their asks as they pertain to the effects this amendment would have on the use and enjoyment of their property. We understand this application and
Thirty seconds.
... is an amendment to a prior approval and that these variances regarding size, bulk, and density were granted many years ago by a different board. As a result, we recognize the final approval tonight may be influenced by these earlier decisions. However, we feel it is important to state on the record that the prior approval of this project could be considered an exception and not the standard for future development in our neighborhood. On behalf of the Lincoln Park North Neighborhood Association, I want to thank you for your time and attention this evening. We trust that the board will fully consider our concerns as it evaluates its application and hope any decisions will prioritize the long-term well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just address some of the comments?
Yes.
For the rest of the board? So first, yeah, we will provide the glass that, that I guess helps to prevent bird strikes. That, that was agreed to. And just to be clear, we're not changing the scale or the density of, of the project. This is the same as what was approved, you know, years ago. Same, same number of units, same, same height. We're actually bringing the, the building back and moving it backwards at the, at the back of the building, as, as Mr. Amara provided. And then, and on, on the ground floor, the reason we pushed, we pushed it out was to provide for the proper parking, the drive aisle space within, within the garage. That's, that's why we, we moved that. I'm sorry. And, and in, and the upper floors, as we, we noted, we, we pushed the building back three feet on, on that, that one side. And I think it's important to, to remember, and I don't discount their, their concerns here, but the project always, always envisioned a fence on a property line. So it wasn't going to be an open area next to their property or the chapel. We're always going to have a fence. So on the north side of the chapel unit, I believe there's a five-foot area between the chapel unit and the property line, and then you would have had a fence. Now you're going to have the, the building there, it's actually going to be open with that, this gate or fence that, that Mr. Amara referenced, so it's, it's open air. It's not, it's not a, a, a concrete block from the floor up. It's, it's actually, that, that area is going to be open, so the air flows through. And then the purpose is you can open that, that fence in the event they need that extra space to move something in there. And the same with, with behind, behind the chapel, where the parking is proposed, that was always going to have a fence. So that wasn't going to be open where you could just walk behind your house and, and access the back of, of the building. And, and in that sense, too, you know, nobody has the right to just go on somebody else's property to, to work on your property, right? You, you would need an agreement in place to do that. So we're not, we're, you know, that, what we're, what we're doing tonight is we're affirmatively agreeing that we're going to provide you this access because we're going to enter into a reciprocal maintenance agreement. So when you do have, have any, anything comes up that you have to work on the building, we're going to have that in place. You, you don't, we're not, we're never going to say no because it's going to be in, in place and that, that, you know, we've agreed to that, that can be a condition of approval. But I think that's an important thing that, you know, that, that we're affirmatively agreeing with our neighbors that, that, that we're going to have, provide access for, for each other to, to maintain the respective buildings.
Okay. At this time, if there is no other public comment, thank you for your comments. I'd like to ask the commissioners if they have any questions that they would like to propose at this time.
Yeah, just again, someone said before, four inches between the buildings. What's the actual space? That's kind of hard to do any work if something ever happens in between buildings. I've seen people do it in a foot, but not four inches.
Give me one second.
So I, I think this, I'm going to answer this and clarify this point because I, I totally understand their point, and I had these conversations, and maybe I didn't do a good job of explaining this, and Chuck just did. What we're talking about is, is, is that unit at the bottom of, left of the screen. That's the chapel.
Maybe enlarge that?
And, yeah, I could probably do that. Let me do this, and...
Mr. Person.
Let's see, I've never used an apple before, but, and I, this is not mine, so I'm trying. All right, so down here, this area here is, is, the, the black line is the property line, and I think that's the most important thing to understand. The black line is the property line. The property line is four inches away from the chapel's wall. Now, whether there's a building on the property at all, or if there's no building, there's always going to be a fence at the property line, and you can't access somebody else's property without permission, period. That's separate from whether there's a building there or not. And I don't think I, maybe I did a good job explaining that before, like I said, but that, what we're talking about is the property line four inches away from the wall.
And when you say that, you're talking about where the parking is proposed.
And, and we're talking about where this parking down here is proposed. That's where this is four inches away. Now, what we've, what, what I've tried to do is, I, there's no building above it, so this is open air. It's basically the same condition as now. The difference is there, there, there is parking proposed there. Now, today, there's people parking not as deep as this, but this is a parking space that's proposed there. And the agreement is the fence can have a gate to open, and cars can be removed for access with, with, in, that, which goes both ways. I think I just, this is the part I wanted to explain, that there, there is a property line here, and above, there is nothing on this side, and I can go to the... This, this is here, open air, and this is still open air here. And just go back here, and the property line is what's four, four inches away. So it, the, the parking next to it is basically, you know, it's going to be concrete or asphalt, open air, which is the same condition as today. You, you'll need an access agreement today, you need an access agreement when the building is up. It's still open air, there's still, there's going to be a fence if they developed or not. I think the condition that's there today may be sort of deceiving some people that's just going to be like that forever, but once something is decided, there are going to be a fence around the property.
And, and Matt, could you speak to the distance between the chapel unit and the property line to the north there?
Yes.
That's...
This is, this is five feet, and then, again, there's the property line, which is the dark black line. And on, on that property line, there would be a fence, and again, we've, I've agreed, and I will detail this, and this can be a condition to, for the fence to be operable for any equipment or anything to be accessed through that.
And, and above the first floor, there's an additional three-foot setback?
That's accurate, yes.
So you have an eight, eight feet between the chapel and the
Above, yeah, if they need to do something to the roof or something like that, yeah.
Any other commissioners have questions? I just have one question. Delaware is a short street, correct? And it's a dead end
Dead end, yes, correct.
Into the park, correct? Just wanted to make sure. It only runs, what, two or three blocks? Not even?
I, it might be less. I, I know. Yeah.
It does go on the other side?
It's, it's, it's
Saying Kensington to Duncan.
I'll show you
But it stops, and then you can't, you can't drive through.
Yeah. It goes, that ends, under the exact same, sorry, it's maybe two or three blocks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Allen?
Yes. Can, can you address the first lady? And I apologize, I was trying to
I'm sorry.
Get your name.
Robin.
The first lady. Robin, can you, can you address Ms. Robyn's concern about the fire and, and the fire rating or materials that you're going to use?
Of course, yeah. The, and, and this is something I, certainly is dictated by building code, and this is what we abide by. And the, the, this, the first floor of this building is a non-combustible construction because it's a five-story building, so the, it's what we commonly refer to as four-over-one. It's four stories of 5A, which is wood construction, over one story of 1A, which is non-combustible construction. So the first floor will only have concrete or steel. It'll be fire-rated three hours, and it's going to be sprinkler construction.
Does that answer your question?
She was concerned with
Did, she said the fire, yeah.
Regarding the cars, cars right there.
Her, her question specifically, if I may, Robin, I think I understood your question. She's talking about if something happens in this area right here. Am I right? Okay. So the cars in this area, the, there would be a sprinkler system that's exactly at the edge that would throw in this direction, and if, in case of emergency, they would be moved. But it's the same condition if something happened here, and, and there was fire under the building, the cars would have to be moved. Now, the difference is this is in proximity to her building, and we will be taking every precaution from sprinkler to the non-combustible construction on this site.
Okay, I have a question. So the spaces that were originally available, you had 85 spaces.
Eighty-four.
Okay.
I think Chuck said eighty-five, but it was eighty-four.
Okay, it was eighty-four, okay. And now you reduce those spaces, and, and you're making up the other spaces, you have 10 shared spaces. So you are still missing so many spaces from the original amount. I think about 33 spaces, I'm looking at, maybe, that you're missing, or?
I don't do math, but it's about thirty, yeah.
About thirty. So is the parking on a first-come, first-served basis? Is it designated parking? Is it assigned parking?
So the, 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 the way the parking's calculated is 16 units, 16 parking spaces are for 126 Delaware.
The convent.
The convent, yes. And, and the rest are for the building, and 10 of them are shared with the school because we did this, we did the count with the school over a few months, noticed exactly what they wanted, suggested that, and there would be 10 parking spaces. Those would be assigned for it to be shared parking, and they'll be shared parking from 8:00 AM to maybe 3:00 PM or something like that. So it's during the time that if you're parking in the building and you leave with the car, the school will be parking there. And the school also has, I believe, seven parking spaces, that was part of the discussion with them on their property. So originally, they thought they needed more. They came back and they, we discussed it with them, and I think the number they needed was seven plus seven, fourteen, something like that, but we decided to give 10 inside the building.
Okay, so we're still down number of spaces, though, from the original amount?
Yes, it's reduced, and, and that's because before, it was 25 assigned spaces, there was no short parking, and that number is basically not needed as much after discussions with them.
Okay.
And, and that's based on the assumption, obviously, that people will be using their cars and out there during that period, so therefore they become
That's accurate, yes.
... to utilize the space when, rather than just have an assigned empty space at all times if someone's away.
Exactly.
Okay. One, one other question. The, there was something about traffic. I know you said you had your traffic person here.
We do.
And one of the members of the public mentioned about
Kayla, yes.
Yeah. Can you just address that concern a little bit, the, the traffic person that was here? Just briefly.
Lee, middle initial D as in Daniel, Klein, K.L.E.I.N.
Do you swear the testimony about the given proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and you think that's the truth?
I do.
And for the record, Mr. Klein has been accepted as an expert before
Many, yes.
Thank you.
My license is current and in good standing. So the question was the traffic generated by this development. If I could get my report out. We use the Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation calculation using the 11th Edition, and the proposed 54 units would generate 17 trips during the morning peak hour. Fourteen trips during the PM peak hour, so that in the morning, it would be approximately two or three trips in and 15 trips out, and in the afternoon peak hour, it would be 10 trips coming home and four trips leaving, for a total of 14. That's considered an insignificant amount of traffic. Anything less than 100 peak hour trips is insignificant, and that's approximately one trip every five minutes or so, four to five minutes.
I just wanted to hear that there about the study a little bit. I know there was, there was, there was a question about one of the intersections, though. Which intersection was it?
Duncan. Duncan and Delaware.
Delaware. The question was?
Yeah, the school closes the street, you might be able to talk more about that, but the school closes Kensington, I believe, during pickup and drop off.
And Delaware is a one-way street.
Right. And right now, Delaware
You can't hear them. Can you please speak up? Wait.
No, I, I think you might have to come up.
Come up, she can't hear.
Kayla Burl. Thank you. Right now, Delaware Avenue goes through Duncan Avenue, that's the intersection. There are curb bumpouts there, and there are two-way bike lanes there that are pretty newly installed. They were installed in October. So people are pulling through the crosswalk of Delaware Avenue and stopping and blocking traffic. There's a lot of kids that cross. It's become a safety issue. We've asked the city to study that a little bit more closely, maybe see if there's a signal that we could get or some, some kind of signal that we could get, or some, some kind of better flow control. But it, this wasn't part of the traffic study that was done, and the reason the developer gave us was because it wasn't required. But adding all these units with a street closure just seems like a lot.
Okay. So I'll just wait for when staff gives their report.
Uh, any commissioners have any other questions at this time? Okay, can we hear staff comments?
Certainly. I guess, while it's fresh in my mind, I just want to clarify with Mr. Klein about some traffic flow in this area. So, the proposed, the proposed egress and ingresses on Delaware Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And Delaware Avenue is a one-way northbound street, correct? And Gautier Avenue is a one ba, one-way westbound street, correct?
I have to check, but I'm pretty sure it's one-way also, yeah, from my side, yeah.
So the envisioned access would be, I guess, during most hours, exit would be going up Delaware to Duncan for most, most trips.
Correct.
Um, and then entrance would presumably be via Kensington?
Correct.
I guess, what would be the envisioned traffic flow when Kensington is closed? Of how you would access Delaware?
Yeah, that would be the same way that the people at 126 get into their properties, or how people are getting into the, the parking lot that this project is on right now.
Could, could you illuminate for me? I, I don't-
I don't know how they do it.
They drive the wrong way.
There's two, either you can speak to the crossing guard, and they, and perhaps she will move the cones to let you through when, when-
Um, do you mind just addressing the microphone, so we can record?
Sorry. David Lyons, L-Y-O-N-S. Yes, there's a crossing guard who closes the street for school pickups and drop-offs. Peggy, she lays cones out. I believe she will move them and let you through if she knows who you are and knows that you live there. Otherwise, yeah, a lot of people drive the wrong way on Delaware. They come on Gautier and go the wrong way. You see it a lot.
So, Mr. Klein, would it be correct to characterize this conflict as not specific to your building or this development, but a pre-existing problem?
It's an existing condition, exactly, yes.
Okay. Mr. Harrington, would your client be willing to work with traffic to, you know, explore the possibility of changes in this area and cooperating with those?
We will, and I, I can actually state for the record, I, I had a project across the street, an application filed with the board, and we had an extensive discussions with Jersey City Traffic. And it basically came to the conclusion, I think that you are now, it's an existing condition. They thought about changing directions, I think it was discovered that when St. Al's closes, closes it, they do it upon their own accord. But they, their conclusion was to leave it alone. That's, when, there's, there's a, there's a, a property right across the street that we had a pending application. It never made it to the board because we went back and forth. But that, that issue was, was reviewed extensively with, with Jersey City Traffic Engineering. But to answer your question, we would absolutely, you know, look at it again with, with the Jersey City Traffic Department.
Okay, yeah, and I'd just like to reiterate for the record that this is a pre-existing condition, and under the pre-existing approval, this potential traffic conflict would have existed as well, and the board granted approval for this project in that configuration, with, actually with a larger traffic impact due to more parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, thank you. So, Mr. Harrington, do you mind just recounting? I know there were several items referred to in the record that maybe are not reflected on the plans, that you said, I, I heard something about bird glass, and-
Oh, yes, we, we agree that we will provide for the type of glass that, that tries to prevent the-
Yeah, reflective glass, so birds are not flying into it, yes.
Yes.
And I believe there's also mention of reciprocal maintenance agreement?
Yes, that we would enter into a reciprocal maintenance agreement with, with the next reciprocal access agreement, I'm sorry, for maintenance with, with the neighbors. The terms would be upon reasonable notice or in event of emergent needs, immediate access.
All right. With that being said, staff recommends approval, provided those two conditions are met, plus all previous conditions from previous approvals remain in force.
Do the commissioners have any questions for the staff or anyone else? Okay. Then, since there are no additional comments or questions, I'm asking for a motion to approve case Z2023-0019 with conditions. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z2023-0019.
I'll second.
Commissioner Zabluky?
I vote aye, and just a little, just a little advice, I would think that once the building's built, it would be wise to engage the councilperson of that district to make sure that traffic and engineering actually looks at this one more time. Once it's built, you got to see actually that, that how things are being done, and how it affects the school. I know when schools shut streets down, it changes things, but that's going to happen no matter what, because that's the only way they could do it. So, I would just suggest that you engage the councilperson in that district to just make sure that there's discussion about it once it's built. I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes, nice project, I agree with Commissioner Zabluky, I vote aye.
Chair Coyle?
I vote yes, but I would hope that the, the councilperson is proactive from the start of the building to get this moving, so that maybe the traffic flow can be addressed prior to the building even being finished. Okay?
Motion carries, seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
Tony, and do you need a break before we move on? No? Okay. Okay. Our next case is Z2024-0077, 151 Broadway.
Good evening, members of the board. Michael Higgins of Castano Quigley Chirami, on behalf of the applicant. Counsel, if I may approach, I have the original notices.
Yes, I think we've seen them. You can give them to the reporter, and she'll mark them as A1. It's an affidavit, proof of service, and notice of publication, correct?
Yes.
So before you begin, um, okay.
Yeah. Excuse me. Great, thank you.
I do have a question. Has this project been built already? This is finished?
Yes, it has. It has.
And you're coming before us when it's finished to ask for variances?
That, for, for a site plan amendment, that is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, so why was it not sent in prior to you making, to the site being amended, or the plans being amended?
Yes, so I think I can provide a little explanation. So, the reason that it has already been constructed essentially boils down to this being a developer that is not familiar with the process, and, and frankly, is an inexperienced developer, who was of the impression, in this case, that the majority of these changes were not material and were minor enough that they could be done without going against the provisions of the previous resolution and previously approved plans. That's essentially the justification, not that it is a justification, but that is the, the reasoning for these deviations not being brought up earlier. The reason for the changes, frankly, when this was constructed and when it was previously approved, there were supply chain shortages and issues related to the pandemic, the coronavirus pandemic. They were not able to get certain materials, and the applicant proceeded, got those materials, and built the project as it is.
But when he submitted the original plans, was he not kind of educated to the fact that if he was going to make changes, he had to come before the board again and submit those changes?
He, he should have been aware of that fact. The only thing that I can say to that is that it is clearly an inexperienced developer.
Was the builder experienced?
Sorry?
What, was the builder, was he experienced?
You would assume the builder was experienced. The developer should have had a greater degree of oversight over the contractors and builders here. Simply that, that didn't happen. That didn't happen, there wasn't a sufficient degree of oversight. And we're not here to say that it wasn't a mistake, certainly. It, it was certainly a mistake, and the applicant is paying for it with having to go through a process to basically rectify this, this, this situation.
Is this the first building this person has built in Jersey City or anywhere?
I do not believe that is the case, no. However, I, I do believe that what they've constructed all was within a similar timeframe.
Okay, let's hear it, but-
Yes, the, the point being that had they learned the lesson earlier, they would have presumably taken it with them into future builds. Being that everything was in a similar timeframe, they did not, they did not take that home.
We'll hear it and just make a decision? Okay, we'll-
I do have, I do have an architect to walk through this, the changes, and-
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
The changes are, yes.
Yeah, and I think the, the right way for, for this to get looked at really is, as a sort of de novo application, as if this wasn't constructed, and the board could consider whether these would have been approved had it been filed in a timely manner. So with that, Jeff Lewis is the architect, if we could have him sworn in and qualified.
Hi. Jeffrey Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. Yes, I do. And for the record, my license is active and in good standing in New Jersey. So I'm good?
Yes, you're good, yes, you've been before this board many times.
Okay. So, 151 Broadway. First, I want to emphasize that none of the changes that we made here create any new variances on this project. None of the changes affect the building square footage or the building height. These are generally material and color changes. There are a couple of minor design changes that I'm going to go over. And again, most of those changes were based on pandemic availability or, sorry, lack thereof. Come back up. Sorry about that. Okay. So the first, I want to go over the couple more of the design changes. The first would be the front entry doors. So if you look at the two front entry doors that we have, the openings did stay the same exact size. However, the changes, we updated the doors and windows and the side lights, excuse me, to be three-quarter glass, and the rest would be wood finish. And then the, the glass has gone from just a plain glass to more of a decorative glass with a pattern in it. And lastly, the doors were previously going to be painted to match the garage door and the windows. Those doors are now painted a maroon, a burgundy color. The second change would be the two small roofs that are built, one is over the garage door, and then one is mirrored over the front entry on the right side of the building. Those previously were more of a pediment-style overhang, and those were changed to a kind of a shed roof instead. And this is a design change that is appropriate for this building type. And a third change was the wall sconces were changed to a different style wall sconce. Besides that, everything else are material and color changes. The one material change is on the rear and the side elevations on the first floor, we were proposing a split-faced block. That material wasn't available, so the ground floor was built with just a regular masonry block, and was finished with a parch coat that was a smooth stucco finish painted light gray. It's a very common Jersey City finish on the ground floor. And then, besides that, everything else were color changes, colors that weren't available that we had to change, other colors that we changed to match the colors that had to be changed. This includes the color of the brick, the siding, the garage door, the windows, and the metal panels on the bay window above. And I'm going to go to the next page to go over those color changes. So first, we have the brick, which was previously a ruby red, a darker brick, and it's changed to a red colonial iron spot, which is a slightly lighter brick than that. The siding above was a gray slate color that was changed to a cream color. The window, excuse me, the garage door was originally going to be a color called sand tone, and that had to be changed to white. The window trim and window frames were also going to be sand toned, those were also changed to white. The metal panels above were a color called anadec, I don't know if I said that right, I'm sorry, satin mica, and that was changed to sandstone, which is a very similar color, just a little bit lighter. And then, as I mentioned, the split-faced block was not available, so we did do a light gray, smooth stucco finish. And I also have a, at the bottom here, a photograph of the exterior light that we chose to use instead of what was approved. That's a summary of all the changes that we made. Again, we're not creating any additional variances, and most of this is color changes and material changes. I can answer any questions about these that you have?
Okay, is there anyone else that you have presenting tonight for us? All right, we'll hold out questions. Is there anyone in the, from the community that wants to make any comments? Okay, please come forward.
Michael Manzo, 82 Wright Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, lifelong. I do. I did get a notice I'm within a 200 feet of this project. First thing I want to refer to the preceding applicant. It was tremendous, the community going back and forth, talking, give and take, that's what's driving Jersey City to be a cohesive place for everybody to live in. We didn't get that with this project. The applicant, from the beginning, we had an attorney that was talking down to us, it was a Zoom meeting, we even had board members, previous board, call us and apologize on their behalf because of what we had to endure. To be naive to say that this was an accident oversight, I don't go for it, and I'm not going to go there. To see it today, madam, you picked it up right away, this is already completed, I know where we're going, what we're going to do to make it right. And I don't think that's the issue here, I think it's the community and building a community. I know the guy lives right down the street, his first project, no, there's other things there. But I think you missed the most important thing that could have helped this client. He had a bad fire there. That set him back, he had to redo the whole side of the house, so I kind of feel for him with that. So he didn't get the right stuff happening at the right time. I just wanted to add that there. As far as the house, he did a nice job there, he's going to occupy it, and that's all I have to say. The only thing, we're getting hit this end, then we had the other project that I came against with the notification, they're doing whatever they want to do, how they want to do it, they don't respect people, neighbors, traffic, and stuff like that. It's not as crucial with this as with the other project, but I have to speak, I've been here all my life, I don't like what I see. As far as this goes, it's a nice house, he's going to live there, let's go with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If I may, very briefly, first thing that I should address, because there was a statement about an attorney, that was certainly not our office, we didn't represent the developer at that time.
Not at all. It was someone else.
Thank you.
But there was a fire.
There was a fire. I did not bring this to the board's attention, because I did not find it relevant towards if this was a new application, how I think the board should be looking at it, treating this as a new application, whether that would bear into it. But that did add difficulty to my client, certainly.
Do we have questions? I have a question. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name or-
Jeffrey Lewis.
Jeffrey, okay. So, were you in on these changes? I mean, you seem to know about these changes, and you're saying this was changed and that was changed. So, did he come to you with these changes, or did you recommend these changes to him?
No, actually, I wasn't the project architect for this one, so it wouldn't have been me that he would have reached out to. I don't believe that the project architect knew about these changes until they went out to the site towards the end of the project.
Okay.
Oh, you had a question?
Have a question?
No, I, I think I just want to hear the-
Oh, okay, so-
Because I think that would mean a lot of what I'm thinking.
Okay, so no one, if there are no other further, you have a question, yes.
So, this was approved, excuse me, this was approved in 2020. When did the construction start?
I believe the construction started, my, my understanding is that the construction was completed sometime in mid to late 2023. When it started, I'm not sure.
Yeah, from what I understand, there were a few delays- Yeah, from what I understand, there were a few delays. There was the fire. There was also a storm water, a storm pipe problem with the city, with the.
There was a problem related to storm pipe and they also had to coordinate with NJ DOT, which contributed to the delay. This is close to 109.
Okay, so it was one general contractor, one builder on a project the whole time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If no other further questions from the commissioners, I'd like to hear from the staff.
I'll try to be rather brief here. I understand the potential hardships during construction, but I just want to bring it to the board's attention, to the public's attention, that there is a condition that's almost put in every resolution that's drafted and memorialized. And basically says that, you know, no changes, whether it be with the facade, material, shall be permitted without consulting with the planning department. And from your testimony, I haven't really gotten that you, the applicant communicated with the planning department about these changes. With that being said, I'll leave it in the board's discretion to decide whether or not this should be approved. Just wanted to mention that for the commissioners tonight.
But Eric, from a practical point of view, where are we? He's trying to get a CO and somebody's picking this up and saying, come before the board.
Right.
No, no plan amendment, no CO.
So what we did in the past with some other applications is we, the applicant discussed it with the planning department to see what kind of changes can be made. So whether it's replacing some material, changing some colors around to kind of bring it close to the original approval, that's something we should work on and that's their next step, basically.
So I was actually going to mention that. I was going to say, so this is kind of weird, but this isn't a precedent that none of us like to set, period, when it comes to this. The fact that there's no variances or anything, if that's true, would apply, you know, it's, it's, that, that would be a whole different scenario, to be quite honest, far as I'm concerned. But I was going to say, is there a way to have staff, like to really just make everything conditional upon staff and you guys meeting and nothing happens unless you guys agree with something, the staff, like, I mean, to leave it in limbo? I mean, like, you know what I'm saying, right? Because it seems to me, maybe I'm wrong, that's why I was waiting for the staff to say, it seems like most of this is color changes. And the front doors, I don't know, maybe you want to make them change it and you would have to live with it, but being that there are no variances or anything else, that's really where my mind is at?
Okay, but we've had this before.
There was more, but there was more done though.
There was more, but, but there was a couple that just had a few things too. And we turned it down because they did not go before the planning board again. So I really think we have to be consistent in this matter.
Assume we turn it down.
Right.
What happens?
They would go back to Eric, I believe, and get that.
What's the process? What happens next? We turn that down, you reapply, we start all over again? You go change colors or we just stare at the building?
Well, it could be at the discretion of the planning, planning director, of course, which direction they go in. I mean, something like this, of course, they're not egregious changes. However, the planning director would be able to decide whether it can just be handled administratively, so it doesn't even have to, you know, maybe go to another board meeting. But this application being brought forward to us is regarding these changes. And condition, condition of approval would be overriding this entire application and essentially making this application, you know, kind of.
Exactly.
Rather mute, right?
That's what I'm trying to get at, because that's the quandary and so.
Right.
Is it like, if we vote it down, do they come back in front of you guys and then reapply? Or do we vote it forward pending conditions and let you guys handle it administratively? I don't know what the answer is, but.
I mean, of course, I don't want to.
I would, I would, whatever the law is, I think that's what we need to follow, whatever is recommended, which is.
Vinny, do you want to weigh on this then?
Legally, I.
Well, hold on. We're at the point where I said we're at the point, right? He can't move forward or backward because he can't get a CO.
Right.
Correct? That's the way we are.
Yes.
Okay, so the only way he can get a CO is if he gets these amendments passed by us.
Okay.
Right? Unless we say these, these amendments are just, you know, de minimis.
Yeah, so.
Use a better word. But unless we say that, however, I, I don't have the original resolution in front of me, but I'm assuming that resolution said if you were going to change anything in material or design, you had to go before the planning department.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
If that's what it said and that's what they didn't do, so wouldn't it be logical to say, okay, let's just forget this for the moment and let them go before you with these changes in the planning department and say what the planning department wants? So for example, they don't want this red colonial iron spot brick. They want it a darker color or something like that. I don't know what they want.
Right.
But maybe administratively, that's what should be here, because otherwise they're just grinding their gears in quicksand. So some, something has to give here. If we deny this, okay, so it's denied. Then what do they do? They can't get a CO. But if we suggest that they go back before you, the planning board, and look at these, at these, all the changes, this, these three, six changes, that's it? Colors, basically, basically colors and, and you as the staff say, okay, listen, you shouldn't do this. This is, in other words, a, a problem enough for this owner, because he can't get into this place now. So whatever it's costing him to, to carry it or whatever, whatever it is, that's a hardship, but that's a hardship he created himself. Thank God he only created these type of superficial problems. If it was anything deeper than that, he'd have a real problem. But, but, but for now, can we simply just kick this back to you? Just internally to say it, it's okay or it's not okay and then come back to us and you with a little bit of stronger recommendation, one way or the other? I don't like it, you know, my staff doesn't like this.
So Vinny, would we be, so I just want to make sure I understand, would we be adjourning this item then?
That's what I'm thinking, adjourning and carrying it till you guys figure it out. Because I can't, and I agree with the chairwoman, I can't vote yes and bypass the staff because that's the worst precedent we can set. The staff has to have recommendations to us. So if it was just voting on it now, the answer is no, but it still leaves us, everybody in this issue. So that's what I, I was thinking, either we carry it until you guys feel comfortable with some kind of compromise and it, listen, it's them, that you feel comfortable presenting, saying they made these corrections and then you recommend it. But like, if it's now, then it's, you understand?
Okay.
So if you, if you guys are willing to adjourn it and, you know, to work this out a little bit, staff, but I, I can't vote yes without the staff having their fingerprints on this because they should and it's respectful. And we can't have people come in here after the fact. And we had people come in here with more serious stuff than, and the answer was no. You had to live with it.
And we also have to take a look, like I said, because I don't have the resolution in front of me, but some of our resolutions say.
I have a copy of the resolution, counsel.
Does it say that the architect has to be notified, has to be on site? But then it's a different architect.
It, it does have a condition that the architect should be retained.
Right.
And confirm that it's been built.
Yeah. So, you know, so, okay, so that, that's not.
If I could, that's actually when, what it usually says is before they get their CO, we have to come out and certify that everything was done as per zoning board approval. And that's when we found out that that was not the case.
Right.
That's unfortunately all the way at the end of the project.
Okay, yeah. So eventually whoever the other architect is should, you know, kind of have a little scorecard in their planning board and say, you know, this is not right, you know? We can't let Mr. Lewis take the heat for something that somebody else did. Who is the other architect? Oh, yeah, who is the other architect?
Raul Cabana is the architect for this.
Oh, okay. Raul Cabana, yeah.
Okay, so what we're saying is that we're, he's not, we're not approving this, we're not doing anything at the moment, we're going to adjourn it. Okay. Right.
For the record, we consent to adjourning the application. We're happy to work with staff on this and whether it be resolved administratively after or involves another hearing, either way, we're happy to work with staff.
Well, that's, we're all in favor of adjourning this?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this case is adjourned until future notice when, after they worked this out with the planning board or the zoning board?
You're going to have to renotice this because we can't carry it to a certain date. I don't know how long it's going to take you to get there and what they're going to say to you.
Understood, understood.
Are we making a motion for, for carrying this application to an attorney?
We're not going to, we're just going to adjourn it.
Okay.
But it depends on, we can't carry it to a certain date because I don't know how long it's, I don't know what these changes really mean.
I would like to make a motion that we're on record saying that we made a motion to adjourn this.
I, I.
No? Did we say it?
I need to make one more sort of clarification on the record. Would this be resolved administratively by staff or would this be coming back to another hearing? In the event that it's done administratively, we would withdraw the application afterwards. In that case, there would be no notice required.
That would be up to the planning board, that would be the zoning board for them to decide that.
Yeah, and that's pretty much what the discussions would be for. We'll just speak it over and kind of decide where this one should go. So it may not, you know, the planning director may determine that this doesn't really belong in front of a board. Because again, yeah, the, the, the changes aren't egregious. We, you know, these aren't really significant changes. However, it's still deviating from a condition of approval. So staff will have to just communicate with the applicant to determine the next steps for this item.
Okay.
Understood, thank you.
So did we have a motion that we all agreed to? Did we take, did you have a motion? Did you take a vote, account from us?
I think I said it too fast.
You said, yeah.
That we may take a motion to adjourn and everybody said yes.
Okay.
So we could do it formally.
Yes. I'd rather formally.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Zabluky?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron? Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Burns? Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Coe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries to adjourn this item, seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, good evening.
Hi, yes, Tony, do you want a break now? Do you need a little bit of a break? You, do you need, you don't? Okay.
Maybe 10 minutes.
Because it's.
We're going to take a 10 minute break. It's about 8:12 now. We'll come back about 8:25.
Next one's a little bit longer, so now's a good time for a break.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And at this time, we are going to hear case Z2024-0044. At this time, as I announced earlier, we will be ending the session tonight at 9:45 since security leaves at 10 o'clock and the building will be secured. So I'm not certain, we're going to get to the next two cases since Mr. Joseph told me that this could be a little bit long hearing tonight.
We will be as quick as we possibly can be.
Okay, okay. So you have the floor.
Great, good evening. As we're getting set up here, we're looking for the connection cables, but Stephen Joseph, Kasano Kugali Charami for the applicant. This is a notice application, so I'm going to turn in my notices and we can mark this as A1, please.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
All right. 83 Morris. This is located on the corner of Morris Street and Washington Street in the historic district. Purpose of the application, this has developed a property with a four story mixed use building, 13 dwelling units, commercial on the ground floor, while also incorporating an existing historic building on the site. In order to accomplish this, the applicant is requesting preliminary and, sorry, yep, let me know when you're ready. Good, back on the record, okay. In order to accomplish this, the applicant is requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval with DNC variances for use, height, some setbacks, coverage, number of street trees. It's a mouthful of variances, but I, I think as we go through the plans, you, you'll see why a lot of it's the nature of the lot being on the corner and it being in a historic district. The applicant was also heard by the Historic Preservation Commission or many design meetings with HPC staff. Ultimately, the commission recommended to this board that the application be approved with, with conditions. And there's a, a list of conditions in the, in the staff report as well. We do have three experts for you this evening. We have a civil engineer, we have an architect and we have a planner. We're going to start with engineering, very brief testimony on the civil part. We'll go into the architectural, which will be the bulk of the presentation, and then we'll finish off with planning. So let's get Trevor up here, get him sworn in.
Trevor Curtis. Yes. I do.
So Trevor, I, I'm not sure if you've been sworn before this board in the past, if you could just brief history of your education, confirm your licenses in good standing and we'll ask the board to qualify you.
Sure. So my name is Trevor Curtis. I am currently a principal at L2A Land Design, a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey since the last seven years. Graduated from Rutgers University with a bachelor's in science and civil engineering in 2013. I've appeared, appeared before the Jersey City Planning Board, I don't believe the zoning board, but also Hoboken, planning and zoning on a number of occasions.
Would ask the board accept Trevor's qualification.
Accept his expertise, yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Trevor.
Just make sure it's plugged in. I think it.
There we go. All right, Trevor, if you could just give us some brief testimony on the stormwater, civil and landscaping, please.
Sure. So as, as Steve said, the property is located at 83 to 89 Morris Street, which is at the intersection of Washington and Morris, located within the historic district designated as block 14 or 14403, lots one and five. So I'll bring up sheet CO2, which is just the existing conditions plan to identify briefly what is on the property. The property currently has two existing curb cuts, one to an asphalt parking area currently, which I believe was an outdoor seating area during COVID. There's an existing historic three story building with a, what used to be a frame garage, may not be there anymore with, which is where the second curb cut is. The streetscape is, if you've been there recently, somewhat dilapidated, the existing curbing and sidewalk needs repair. But in general, all of these improvements would be incorporated into a totally redeveloped site, including a four story, three over one, mixed use building with ground floor commercial and three stories of residential above, including 13 units. Part of the scope of the civil was to improve the streetscape, including all of the curbing, the maintenance of the three existing street trees and the incorporation of two new street trees and reconstructing the tree pits to a Jersey City standard. All of the curbing would be reconstructed and ADA access would be provided to the building as part of these improvements. We're also including four city decorative post op lights to increase the lighting and maintain that historic aesthetic. Those, those lights were coordinated with Dave Murphy Associates, who does specific lights for each part of the city. Quickly go through, the, the main idea of the civil, under existing conditions, there's no known measures of stormwater management. I mean, known, like, there are no detention measures. It predates any of the stormwater rules. Proposed conditions include a green roof north of, can't even read it, 2,284 square feet of green roof and a concrete detention basin just greater than 700 cubic feet. So under proposed conditions, all of the stormwater runoff from the property would proposed conditions, all of the stormwater runoff from the property would be captured and reduced significantly, resulting in reductions for the 2, 10, and 100 by 50, 75, and 80% of existing conditions. The property would be considered a major development under Jersey City standards, so that would meet the requirements. As required, we have contacted JCMUA and all utility connections would be approved with JCMUA as a condition of approval. The property is not located within the flood plain, so there are no flood issues at this intersection. And throughout the remaining part of the plan set, the lighting identified on sheet CO7, as I mentioned, there's some wall sconces, some canopy fixtures along the facade of the building, and four new street, uh, streetlights situated in between the existing and proposed street trees. I would note that the street trees are limited on this site due to the nature that it is on a corner property. There are a number of standards. Street trees need to follow in Jersey City, one in particular being distances from intersections and another distances from streetlights and utility poles. So we did our best to maintain those mature vegetated, vegetation or trees along the, the property facade, but also to include two new ones on Morris Street. Proposed conditions also include some decorative planter beds. These planter beds, although decorative, do serve a purpose. There is a grade change from the sidewalk area, which would be ADA compliant. That grade change, these, these planter boxes soften the, the grade change. There are steps to get in a portion of a building and ramps to get into other portions to maintain that ADA access. And the remaining sheets are soil erosion, which would require Hudson Essex Pasei soil erosion approval and details.
Thank you, Trevor. We're gonna, assume we're holding all questions until the end. We'll bring Nelson up to talk about the architectural. I think what you heard from Trevor is that there are significant stormwater landscaping and public right-of-way improvements by this project. So let's bring up Nelson so we could take a look at the building. Let's get you sworn in.
Nelson Benavides? B-E-N-A-V-I-D-E-S.
And?
Yes.
And your license is currently in good standing this evening?
Yes, I'm currently licensed in New Jersey for approximately 20 years.
And Nelson has appeared before many boards and commissions of Jersey City many times.
Yes.
Take it away, Nelson.
All right, I won't repeat what Trevor has said regarding the description of the property, so I'll move forward from the site plan. Essentially, this is a corner lot in the historic district, so we're dealing with some unusual, or the way they categorize setbacks, specifically for rear yard setback and side yard setbacks. For this property, since it's on the corner, the long side, which is on Morris Street, is considered the side yard versus Washington Street being the front yard. So our rear yard is actually on the east side of the property, where in this historic district, we're looking to complete the doughnut. So that's why we're looking for a rear yard setback of zero. We're not, we're not going to the backyard, so to speak, but basically the rear yard is the eastern side of the property. These are drawings showing the overall existing block elevation of the property and the block and lot diagram for, and here on the bottom two drawings show the proposed elevation relative to the streetscape of the buildings that currently exist. The top one is, that would be Morris Street and the bottom one, sorry, the top one is Washington, the bottom one would be Morris Street. These are sightline sections, basically showing that we were complying with non-visibility of the roof deck for historic standards. These are sections throughout both Washington and Morris Street. These are the existing drawings of the original townhouse that's there, which currently houses a restaurant on the ground floor and two residential units on the upper floors. And we're proposing interior demolition to reconfigure it as part of the new development. We're preserving the facade and part of the structure and integrating it into the building. And these are the existing elevations and sections of the existing building that's there. This is the cellar, proposed cellar. We're including a cellar which would have overlap space of the commercial for two commercial units from the ground floor, and it would have a service elevator which would access all the, the trash refuse for the commercial part, and also a residential component as well, which would be handled with an internal residential elevator. This is the ground floor plan showing two commercial spaces. We're reusing the existing commercial space, the restaurant space, from the ground floor of the existing building and expanding it, and then the, another commercial space on the corner of Washington and Morris Street. The residential entry for the building would be on the east side of, from Morris Street, which would be 83 Morris. And that's where you see basically the entrance lobby, the stairs and elevator lobby, along with some amenity space towards the back. This is the second floor, which would contain four, three residential units, sorry, four residential units in the new building and one duplex in the existing building. So for a total of 13 residential units. The four units in the existing building, sorry, in the new building would consist of all two-bedroom apartments, all with frontage on Morris and Washington, with the exception of one-bedroom apartment, which would be in the rear courtyard. Essentially, these are the second and third floor essentially identical with the exception of the existing building, which contains the duplex, which would also be a two-bedroom apartment. The top floor, we did some modifications to the front facade to reduce the bulk of the building, which we introduced terraces adjacent to the existing building to reduce its bulk. And there would be a rooftop penthouse addition over the existing building with a small roof terrace. And the top, the roof would contain just an outdoor roof deck with mechanical spaces and green roof. There would be no amenity spaces on the roof. These are proposed elevations of, this is from Morris Street, showing the residential building surrounded by the, sorry, the existing building encompassed, surrounded by the new development. The ground floor would be all commercial with the exception of the residential entry and lobby, and then the upper floors would be the apartments. The materials that were selected would be pretty much, the facade would be handled with two different colored bricks. One would be the maroon brick that you see here in front of me, which has a basic rib. That would be the primary. And then the, the bays underneath the windows would be handled with a special-shaped chisel brick with a solid, standard brick in an alternating pattern. All of the windows would be basically a dark gray cloud window, zinc cornice, and we have some small canopies over the entrances for the residential entry and the commercial corner. We do include some signage as well, mostly through blade signs and through signage over the canopy with small lettering. We're restoring the existing three-story building and storefront and keeping it within historic standards. This is the, sorry, this is the Washington Street elevation, and on this side, we followed also by reducing the bulk of the building, but by changing the materials as it, as it moves further south, where it butts up to the other historic townhouses. These are the sections and elevations of the rear yard. The materiality is essentially, we're doing a panelized hardy, hardy board system and brick. These are just the sections. And the details of the wall section. And the signage and canopy would be here. And these are the renderings of the building. This is the view from the corner of Morris Street and Washington. And you'll see the tone, the different materiality of the building and the, we are using a yellow buff window sills and heads, dark gray windows that are articulated with mullions, zinc cornice and canopy, and a black storefront as well.
So we, we do have material samples here. I know the board doesn't typically get them, so I could pass them around if the board would like.
They're a little heavy. This is the view of Morris Street, showing the existing building and the proposed building surrounding it. And you can see on this view, the building, the part adjacent to the existing building has a setback terrace, and the material changes as well above. Sorry. And this is the view of Washington Street, and the elevation showing it rendered. And I'd be happy to answer any questions after.
And Nelson, if you, if you don't mind, maybe just go back to the site plan or the overhead and just, just say a couple more words on the, the setback and how that was calculated and the.
Yes.
How and why we did that. And did the board want me to pass around the samples or?
I don't think it's necessary. Do you want? It's okay.
So I just blew this up for you. So here we have the corner of Washington and Morris Street. And so we indicated all of the different yards, since this is a corner lot and the historic district has a different definition than other districts for corner lots. So we have the rear yard setback, which I'm showing is 30 feet is what's required. We're at zero because it's a lot line. Then going towards, what's what are, we call a traditional rear yard, is actually the side yard. We are setback there as well. So we're complying with side yard setbacks. In the historic district, side yards are zero, but in this case, we are taking it to approximately 28 feet. And let's see, what else? This building is a four-story building. We're, we're, the height restriction's at 40 feet. We're proposing a 47-foot building height. The corners typically in this area all have higher buildings. I have some photographs of the adjacent corners, so we can review that. So you can see, but in context with the adjacent buildings, we're within the typical height of this neighborhood. And in terms of lot coverage for the building, we maintained it at 80%. And same thing for our building coverage as well. The building coverage is required to be 60%. We're at 80%. We're looking for, based on the development here. Should I also speak about parking?
No. Wait for the planning testimony for that, yeah.
Let me show you those photographs of the corners, cuz that's. This is the, yeah, the Light Horse corner. Yeah, this is Caddy corner, directly across. This is towards the south, the southwest corner. This is our project site. Sorry, let me go. And this is the northeast corner.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring Kristen up next to do some planning testimony.
Kristen Russell, R-U-S-S-E-L-L. I'm with Colliers Engineering and Design. I'm a licensed professional planner. I do.
We, we accept your expertise.
Thank you. So as the engineer, the engineer and the architect have oriented us already, this is the southeast corner of Morris and Washington in the Paulus Hook Historic District. A four-story mixed-use multifamily building is being proposed, and an existing historic building on the site is being retained and incorporated into the proposed project. There are a number of C and D variances that I want to go over with you tonight. I'm gonna go through the D variances first. Those are for use because multifamily housing and the commercial restaurant neither are permitted in the district. And height, where 40 feet is permitted, and we're proposing 47 feet 6 inches. Because the height variance is for a use that's not permitted, it is held to the same level of scrutiny as the use variance, so I'm gonna discuss them together as part of my testimony. So a D variance has to meet the positive and negative criteria. The positive criteria being particular cases and special reasons, and basically this is the, the promotion of the general welfare. So the standard that the board needs to employ to determine if special reasons have been proven is whether the property is particularly suited for the proposed use and height. And I would argue that, yes, it is. In terms of use, these uses are all around the neighborhood already. We see multifamily buildings. We see ground floor commercial across the street, up and down all the blocks in the neighborhood. In fact, there is a, I don't know if you needed to keep seeing that, but there, there is a restaurant overlay zone, for example, directly across the street, and this isn't in that zone, but it does show that what we're asking for is typical to the area. And in terms of height, we are consistent with other three and four-story buildings in the neighborhood. As photos were shown to you just before I came up here, the other three corners of this intersection, those buildings are all around, if not greater than 50 feet, and we're asking for 47.6. So the height is also consistent with what we're seeing in the neighborhood. A D variance also needs to address the negative criteria. So that is to evidence that the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and that they will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So the public good, because we are proposing a development that is so similar to what is already in the neighborhood, the public good is being retained. There's nothing new or offensive coming onto this site that may detract from the historic neighborhood and from the character of the neighborhood. And as I also said, we're keeping that historic building that's there to continue to preserve the, the fabric of the neighborhood. As I will get to in the C variances, and as was discussed briefly by the architect, the, the corner, the nature of the corner lot does trigger some rear yard variances because we didn't want to interrupt the street wall, but we did incorporate rear yard space and open space in that interior lot line in order to preserve some light and air for the community. And also, the architect did a shadow analysis, and because the property is on the southeast corner of the intersection, shadows are generally, generally going to be cast into the street and not onto adjacent properties. So those are examples of how this will not be a detriment to the public good. We also need to show that we will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I looked at your, at the land development ordinance, and it says, and I'm gonna partially quote here, that the purpose of the district is to recognize the special significance of these neighborhoods, meaning historic, because of their varied and well-preserved historic character. The proposed use does honor this character. It incorporates the existing building, and the scale, massing, volume of the proposed building does reflect what's already going on in the neighborhood. Your 2021 master plan includes the need to review development proposals for scale, typology, and architectural character, all of which we've taken into account. The project aligns with the existing character of the neighborhood. The master plan vision also looks for several characteristics. One, a connected Jersey City by way of decreased automobile dependency. I think anything that happens in downtown and in Paulus Hook understands that this is a pedestrian neighborhood, a mass transit neighborhood, and so developing there near transit, near existing transit is appropriate. And also prosperous Jersey City by way of a diversified economy with City by way of a diversified economy with small businesses and 15-minute neighborhoods. So all of that, we are fulfilling with this proposed application. That covers the two D variances, but we also have a series of six C variances. I know that six sounds like a lot, but I think once I go through them, you'll understand why they are. I'll just run through them quickly before I give the legal arguments. For rear yard, you're required 30 feet, and we're proposing zero. For building coverage, you require 60%, and we're proposing 80. For parking, there's a requirement of seven spaces, and we're proposing zero. For street trees, you require one tree per 25 feet of frontage, which comes to seven, and we're proposing four. The number of projecting signs, you require one per facade, and we're proposing three on Morris and two on Washington. And the minimum roof deck setback, you require 10, and we propose zero for Morris. I'll get into them each in a little bit more detail, but I just wanted to give you a summary at the, at the front of this. So in addition to not impairing the zone plan and zoning ordinance, which I discussed with the D variance analysis, C variances also require, C2 variances also require that we show that they will advance the intents and purposes of the municipal land use law, and that the benefits of granting the variance will not substantially outweigh any potential detriments. Bear with me, I just need to get on the record the intents and purposes of the municipal land use law, which are being satisfied. I'm going to give a summarized version of this. Municipal land use law, purpose A is to promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Purpose D requires that the development does not conflict with the development and general welfare of neighboring municipalities in the state. E looks for appropriate population densities. I seeks a desirable visual environment. And J looks to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, all of which are being promoted with this subject application. So to talk about how the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, I think this is really the meat of the C variances. The first being the rear yard, where 30 feet is required, and you're looking, we're asking for zero. And that is because of the corner lot situation. The way that the historic districts define a rear yard makes Washington Street the front yard, and therefore, the rear yard runs along the east lot line at Morris Street. And in order to avoid a break in the street wall along Morris Street, we wanted to pull the building up to abut the adjacent structure and not have that gap. We did, as I mentioned, incorporate some rear open space interior to the lot to attempt to make up for that. And I would just argue that all of this is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Coverage is also related to that, because we are not providing that rear yard space in total and just have the portions internal to the lot. We aren't able to meet the 80% requirement, or, I'm sorry, the 60% requirement. I will note, though, that in order to make up for this, the applicant is proposing a green roof along the whole upper roof. And in fact, it's so extensive that if that were counted as impervious coverage, which is not how the code works, but if it was, you would have only 40% coverage on the lot where 60% is required. So it really is doing a lot of the work that impervious, that is intended to be done by having an impervious coverage requirement. Parking. This site is in a very walkable, transit-oriented neighborhood. I think we all know that. It's two blocks from the light rail, five blocks from the path, three blocks from the ferry. There is really no, there should be no incentive to car ownership in this neighborhood. And in fact, if there had been parking on this site, we would have lost the active ground floor that is currently being proposed. We want to activate that corner as all the, as many corners in the neighborhood have. And I think that that is most important to the site when so much transit is in the immediate vicinity. Signs. Multiple tenants and long facades make the signage variance request appropriate. Two were proposed along Washington Street, which has 60 feet of frontage. So if you think about a typical 25, a lot of 25 feet wide, in 60 feet, you would have two store frontage. And so having two signs along 60 feet is really not out of the ordinary. It's just that this is not subdivided into smaller lots. On Morris Street, that was on Washington Street, on Morris Street, there are three signs proposed. They do expect to have multiple tenants. And in fact, one of the signs is existing on the historical building that they intend to retain. Street trees, as the engineer mentioned during his testimony, there are complications by the fact that this is a corner lot, and there are a number of street poles, light poles, and other infrastructure that really inhibits the ability to have as many trees as is required. We have put in as many as seem able to fit. And the last variances is for terraces, rooftop terraces, I should clarify. There is a requirement that there be a 10-foot setback. However, on a small terrace fronting Morris Street that is accessible to a single unit, no setback is proposed. I understand the nature of wanting that setback in order to not have excessive, if it was a communal rooftop terrace, and you were worried about excessive use and interrupting, impacting the neighborhood and trying to pull that back from the street, that all makes very good sense. But in this case, because it's for a single unit with, I would imagine, accountability for their behavior, because it is one unit, we are asking for relief from that requirement. It is a small terrace, not the whole roof, and we hope you'll consider that request. But that concludes my testimony. I hope that my run-through of the D and C variance proofs has been satisfactory, but I'm happy to take any questions, should you have any.
We'll hold out questions to the end.
So, thank you. I apologize. I know there's a lot of information. We do have D variances here, so we do have to get a lot onto the record. But just to briefly summarize here, I think the board heard a lot about the hardships associated with this application. We're in a historic district and have historic standards to satisfy, which we have. We have a certificate of appropriateness, showing that we satisfied the Secretary of Interior Standards. There's design elements to that that don't necessarily conform with what the zoning requires. The zoning ordinance also does not, lent itself well to a corner lot, especially in historic districts. You've also heard a lot of improvements that are being made here. There's nearly 100% lot coverage now, stormwater nonexistent. We're making a lot of improvements to the site, both onsite and offsite in terms of lamp posts and sidewalk and ADA. And it's also a beautiful building, I think, in my opinion. So if there's any questions, that does conclude our direct testimony.
Okay. Well, ask them at the end. Are there, at this time, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this project? Okay.
Diane Case, last name is K-A-E-S-E, 192 Washington Street, Jersey City. I do. Good evening. I only have three minutes, so David, you're lucky. I stand before you as both a neighbor, because my building is, where I live is about one house away from this project. And I also am here as a representative of the Historic Paulus Hook Association. Paulus Hook Association. There's one clarification I would like to make, and that is that they are not keeping the entire historic building. They are only keeping the front portion of the building. So they are not restoring the building per se. They are only dealing with the front facade and a section behind it. So I just wanted to make that clarification so that the board was well aware of that. The neighborhood basically has few objections to this. The biggest objection is the parking, but we also understand the limitations of this job site. So it is what it is. That is pretty much it. There are a lot of details that have been brought to the attention of the Preservation Commission. They're well aware of them. There are things that need to be addressed from a detail standpoint, but that's not your purview. That's theirs. So we look forward to working with the developer and working with the architect as we continue to take this project from the drawing standpoint to the actual construction standpoint. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi. So my name is Sunday Malona. Sunday Malona, so Sunday, like the day. This is my first zoning board meeting. M as in Mary, I-L-O, N like Nancy A. So I guess I just had a couple of questions. I've spoken to Nelson briefly, I think it was last week. But we, I live now at 180 Washington. I lived on Hudson Street for approximately nine years. So we've been in the neighborhood quite some time, kind of playing catch-up because we didn't receive legal notice at our building, which is actually on the other corner of Washington, the other block. So if you are looking at the adjacent, I guess, corners, you have the southeast corner that is this prospect, and then you have a liquor store across the street, which is an older 1800s historic building. Then you have Light Horse, which is another historic building. Windsor House, not necessarily historic, but built to look historic. And then us, which is set farther back on the opposite side of Washington and Morris itself. So we are 14 units, but on the flip side of the block. So we just actually got notice today of this. So again, kind of playing catch-up a little bit. Some of the owners did have questions as to the height, because we were kept at 40 feet. So this being 47-plus feet, kind of just want to discuss it or understand if, I don't know if this is the appropriate form for that either, but to just understand the variance or what the purpose or intent of it is. Understanding that some of the older historic buildings from the 1800s, those ones are taller, understood, but the rest of the district's been made to maintain 40. So just from an elevation variance, just wasn't sure, because the roofs, like our roof, not roof deck, but like where all of our HVAC and what have you is, there are people that do have, like roof decks as well on Essex Street. So 72, 74, and 78 I spoke to. So we don't know with the shadow study, since that wasn't included, if that's going to be blocking anything for those adjacent, like brownstones as well. So it's more so just questions that we have.
Okay.
The only other one was the trees. Did speak to forestry as well. So they said that at least the project thus far is a little bit smaller on scope than what it needs to be. So the tree pits don't have to be...
One minute remaining.
Yep.
No, no, one minute, one minute.
Sorry. Yeah, so we just wanted to see like a shadow study with our building included, and that the tree pits on Washington and Morris can be 10 by 4, and that the site can actually suit the seven instead of the four that are being requested.
Can someone ask the question, answer the questions, Mr. Joseph?
So there was a visual impact shadow study that was submitted as part of the application. It's on the, it's on the portal. We did submit that. In terms of the trees...
It's submitted. It's not including us. So like, it's not including 180 Washington, which is on the rest of the plans in the actual submission.
Sure. So the, whatever the standards are in the ordinance for the shadow study, that's what, that's what we included. It might have not been within the radius that was required. We're happy to continue discussions, of course, on the, on the project. And if forestry will let us put more trees in, we're happy to do that as well. But Nelson?
I'll just make one, can I make a statement regarding the shadow study?
Yeah.
Our property is on the northwest corner.
I'm just sorry.
Nelson Benavides, architect. Our property is on the northwest corner. So the sun coming from the south, all the shadows would be casted on Morris Street. Nothing would be cast towards Essex Street, towards the area in question. So, okay.
Good point as well. Science was not my best subject.
One more, one more member of the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alexander, A-L-X-A-N-D-R, V as in Victor, E-Z-Z-A, 180 Washington Street, around the corner, same building. Just want to talk on the parking. Absolutely no need for any parking. It would ruin, it would ruin the neighborhood. We don't need parking. Plenty of transportation options, and we could use the commercial spaces. And then the, just the other one was on the trees. Definitely maximizing the trees would be great. Other than that, that's, that's my piece.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there is no other public to speak or to ask questions or express concerns, commissioners, do we have any comments, questions, or concerns?
I just have one question. Which, which unit is the, excuse me, which building is the penthouse going to be in? With the private, with the private deck?
Oh, that's actually on the fourth floor, so it's not a penthouse.
Oh, so which, which building would be to the left or the right?
Sorry, I'll bring that up.
I think he's referring to Nelson.
There, just because of the record. Sorry. So, this is the fourth floor here.
Mm-hmm.
This is the roof terrace.
Yes.
For the corner unit.
Okay, so it would be, it wouldn't be the older, the build that exists in it, it would be one of the, one of the new ones?
Correct. On the existing historic building.
Yes.
We comply with the, with the setback requirement of 10 feet.
Got, okay.
We do have a roof deck with a stair access and small, non-amenity penthouse, so to speak, that's part of the duplex.
Okay.
We do comply with the setback and also with the, sorry, the green roof requirement.
Okay, so the zero setback for the roof is for the newer building?
It's for the new building, correct.
Okay.
And it's on Morris Street.
Okay.
I have a question. The restaurant, are you keeping it in the original building or moving it into the new building?
So Nelson, if you want to show us the, the ground floor. So we haven't finalized, what, tenants and all of that stuff on the, the ground floor, or exactly their space. But I think Nelson could say a couple of words about what we think's going to happen.
We're treating the ground floor as all commercial space hypothetically to restaurant spaces. So we are planning on keeping the restaurant space and keeping the storefront for the existing building, for 85 Morris Street, and then new on the corner.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You know, we showed designation of, you know, kitchen areas towards the back, but we don't know the exact line of demarcation between the existing restaurant and the future restaurant.
One thing that the HPC was asking questions about and concerned about, bless you, is exactly how the ground floor is going to be used and the exact signage and all that. And one of the conditions on, on the record, if you look through the staff report, is any commercial tenants that come in here and have to do a fit-out have to go to HPC for the exact fit-out and the exact, and the exact signage. It's just too early to know exactly how it's, the tenants and how it's going to be laid out.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? She already had her three minutes, Mr. Spocky.
I'm good. I'm good. I'll just have to the report.
Okay. Did you finish? Okay.
I just had a question. So they're actually, since the new tenant has been in the historic building, they're already using different signage. So HPC and zoning is kind of going like this to each other, and it's out of historic guidelines. So that's happening now. It's just, I want to make that on record.
Yeah.
Sunday, like the day.
Yeah, so we're aware of that, and we've actually spoken with historic staff about that. And violations were, were issued, so my client can enforce the lease with the tenant to correct the issue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, if we have no other comments from the commissioners, can I hear from the staff at this time?
Yes. First, I wanted to clarify something throughout the presentation...
Throughout the presentation, it was said that four trees were proposed and then five trees were proposed. So I want to make super clear, it is five trees that are being proposed. And it would be two trees that they would do a payment in lieu of. Which is the better outcome? Five is better than four. So as for the use, staff believes that this site is particularly well-suited for a multifamily residential use. It is 7,500 square feet and change, which is greater than the minimum lot size of 1,800 square feet. Furthermore, the multifamily use kind of points towards density, but the density is in fact complying with the density standard. The density is 75 units per acre and what is being proposed is 75 units per acre. And the bulk of the new construction is consistent with the character and scale of the surrounding neighborhood. As for the ground floor, commercial use, right now specified as restaurant. It, it will replace an already existing restaurant located at 85 Morris Street and at the intersection of Washington Street and Morris Street. There are various restaurants, including the Light Horse Tavern. And there is a commercial use Liberty Wine and Cafe. It is also a site that's adjacent to a restaurant overlay zone. So in the future, if any development was proposed, it would be encouraged to be a restaurant use. This use variance does further the purposes of the Jersey City Master Plan. One of the purposes is to continue efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods. This use will further activate the site, complement the adjacent buildings, which will enhance the overall historic district. In addition to that, incorporating the existing three-story brick house in the new construction will bring that building to current public health, fire, and safety regulations and building codes. It also furthers, furthers the Jersey City Master Plan goal of ensuring that the city's available housing is balanced and meets the needs of current and future residents. The 13 additional units will add to current housing stock, which will address the regional demand for housing that we're currently experiencing. It will strengthen neighborhood-oriented commercial areas. It will add more commercial to already existing commercial within this neighborhood. And finally, it does recognize and promote the richness of the city's historic assets and cultural diversity by preserving that facade of the three-story brick house. As for the height variance that is being asked for, it is designed to complement the, within the context that it is being proposed in. It, the proposal utilizes setbacks and building materials to be context-sensitive towards what is occurring. And at the corners of this intersection, the buildings do tend to be taller than 40 feet. And with that, I will conclude that part of my testimony. I would ask that the attorney agree to the conditions outlined in my memo, which is dated March 4th, 2025. And that also includes, of course, HPC's conditions of approval as well.
There are a lot of them. I won't ask you to read them all, but there are seven Division of Planning comments and 14 Historic Preservation Commission conditions. So all of those conditions the applicant agrees to.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions of Sophia? Okay, with that, since there are no additional questions, comments, et cetera, I'm asking for a motion to vote on case number Z2024-0044.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve K0, Z2024-004.
Four.
Commissioner?
Can I get a second?
Commissioner Zablaki?
It's nice to see how Jersey City has changed so much. I remember where the restaurant was. And by the way, that's where the old Bistro La Source was, which is now located, I'll give them a little plug. There were Latham Houses right now.
I didn't know that.
Yes. So those of you who don't know, you know where to find it. That actual restaurant before that was a Hispanic bar that I used to go hang out with when I was a little young, but that was okay.
Missing the Italian.
Played some pool, it was a good spot. But it's great to see the neighborhood continue to change as a result of a lot of the work that we've done in planning and HEDC in our city over the years. And it continues to grow with the restaurant overlay and the things we've seen on Newark Avenue and elsewhere. So I gladly vote yes on this project.
Commissioner Patel?
I would yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington?
At this time, I will ask for case Z2024-0045, 850 West Side Avenue.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley. On behalf of the applicant, I do have a copy of the notices for counsel.
Yes, I've seen them, we'll just mark them as day one. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Wait one second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you good?
This one, maybe, no, this is a. Right, but it's not the one in.
It's not in the middle of the block.
It's the one in the middle of the block.
They were righteous people. It's a mess. It's very disrespectful.
Because I didn't want to go.
I gotta reseed up in the back. I need to seed in front of the back.
No, no, no. The one we were talking about is. The one.
Looks like hell.
The one we had the problem with was the, all those houses. And there was an empty lot in the middle. And they wanted to put a four-story, where they wanted to put a four-apartment building there. And that's where all the neighbors came out from.
No, that's a noted proof. So what was there now, you'd vote for that?
Oh, no.
It's a mess. Yeah, we've got cemetery.
I think they're mausoleum views now. Aren't they mausoleum views?
Okay. Are we ready? Yes, let's begin.
Okay, thank you. So the application before you tonight is similar to an application that was before this board not too long ago, 140 Glenwood Avenue, where they converted a dormitory use into a residential use. We're proposing to do the same. This is a former dormitory use. It's in the university district, so a residential use per se is not permitted. But as everybody knows, a dormitory use is a residential use, but it's only for students. This would expand it so that you, you can go beyond students in the area. It's a corner lot located at the corner of Glenwood Avenue and West Side Avenue. The existing dormitory has 18 units. We're proposing 18 residential units, two of which will be affordable pursuant to the IZO. I note that there was a prior application that, that was on your agenda for months and months, I think, that, that had a prior owner that was at four stories and 28 units. My client purchased the property and he's just proposing to renovate the building as is in its three-story condition with the 18 units and the two affordable units. We did have two meetings with the community. So the project that you see tonight is a result of addressing their comments and concerns. And that's, that's kind of the long and short of it. We just do, we do need the use variance to permit the residential use. I have two witnesses here with my architect and Mr. Height. So I'm going to jump right in because I know time is short.
Antonio Aiello, spelled A I E L L O. Yes, I do.
Do we accept his credentials?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Mr. Aiello has appeared many times before the boards in Jersey City. Yes, we accept his expertise. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. I appreciate it. Thank you. As Mr. Harrington explained, this project was one of four dormitories that was sold from St. Peter. The project is located on the northeast corner where Glenwood Avenue intersects with West Side Avenue. It's directly across from Holy Name Cemetery. The existing building, sorry, my notes are on my phone. The existing building is currently three stories. We are maintaining that existing height and stories. 18 existing dormitories that we're converting into 18 apartments. The ground floor is the only one that has more involved modifications to the building as a whole. I'm going to work down to the floor plans. The basement itself, we are adding some walls and doors in order to accommodate bicycle storage. The laundry rooms separate the meters for better fire safety. And then that's where all of the utilities are currently housed, as well as the elevator machine room. As mentioned, the first floor is where we're making the most amount of changes internally to the building. We are converting one of the units into a three-bedroom in order to accommodate the affordable housing ordinance of one three-bedroom. The other unit is a modified one-bedroom. Both of those are also going to be accommodating barrier-free requirements for the, for the building as a whole. All of the other floors, very simple. The only real modifications are some small closets in order to add mechanical systems internally into the building, HEAC, heating and cooling for this building itself. The roof is only housing condenser units and heat pump systems for the heating and cooling systems. The existing elevator bulkhead will remain, as will the existing roof hatches for access for maintenance. Now, the exterior of the building is where we're giving it a more of an overhaul to the structure. We're completely removing all of the existing finishes on the building. We're adding a ground floor pattern of brick around the corner of the building on Glenwood Avenue and West Side Avenue, separating it from the units above. The rest will have a textured, seamed stucco finish, simple corne, simple coping, metal coping on the very top. On the West Side Avenue, where the main entrance is, we created darker corners of the building itself, where the brick extends up from the ground floor to the roof. And then we create additional piers on either side of the entrance. And we also added canopies over the entrances as well to kind of create a hierarchy of where the main focal point of the building is on that structure. Scroll down here, as you can see the different color elements. Apologies for that. As you can see here, we have red brick along the first floor that wraps around the two sides of the building. Stucco above, the darker piers on the corners, as well as at the west elevation here. You can see that we have two additional piers to highlight the entrance for the building itself. We have here ebony brick for the corners and then a smooth-in brick shenly for the ground floor. All the windows are going to be replaced for the building. And we're going to add planter boxes along all of the window areas along that ground floor. So that creates a little bit of a barrier between the pedestrians and the building and for privacy reasons. Site-wise, we are protecting all the trees during construction. We've added those notes onto the plans as per the community board's request. And we also highlighted that we opt, what do we do? At the tree pits, we created just a three-sided railing system so that doors have an easier access in and out of their vehicles, so that they don't, they're not hitting the steel grates on the, on the bottom. That's really the extent of the entire presentation. As I mentioned, most of the changes are external. We're giving the building a nice facelift. I'll scroll up to the rendering so you can see it.
And just to be clear, there's no expansion of the existing building?
None whatsoever. We're maintaining exactly as it is. We're only increasing it by one-bedroom count and that's in order to accommodate the three-bedroom for the affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move into Mr. Height and.
Yep.
No, these are your plans?
Yes.
The zoning map on the cover. I'll bring it up though. Yes, Charles Height, last name is spelt H E Y D T. I do.
We accept Mr. Height's expertise, so.
Thank you.
Right ahead.
Yep, still a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. Again, it's a pleasure to be before the board tonight. And I know we're at the tail end of the meeting, so I will move forward. We are proposing what would be a use variance. No bulk variances, given that we're not changing anything of the bulk or physical form of the existing structure. So we do require just a use variance. The property is located in the U University District. So the permitted uses in the university district are relatively narrow. Really focused on providing available land in the city for dormitories, associated fraternity housing, sorority housing, and parks and other kind of community-oriented uses. But the principal, primary focus is permitting dormitories and really to support the St. Peters University that's in this area. So with that, what I will open is just a little bit of detail about the subject property. We're just under 6,000 square feet. It's 5,899 to be exact. And it's an existing three-story structure. There's no surf, there's no off-street parking to the, the building or the property. And it was previously used as a dormitory. It's been a vacant dormitory for many years. The university in the area, St. Peters, did not have plans to reoccupy the dormitory and eventually sold it to what would be a buyer to obviously present this application, which is for residential uses. So being proposed as residential, nothing to do with strictly dormitory or university housing. We do need a use variance. What I wanted to do, well, I'll save that for the end, but I would, I would offer the board that to justify this application, we really turn to the Medici standard, which establishes particular suitability. So just for a couple of, of facts about the property, the subject property itself. One, the lot size is just shy of 6,000 square feet, which is that common number you would find in other zones throughout the city that would allow for multifamily housing. And generally, that's because you need a larger lot to accommodate a larger structure that allows for certain floor plans to have multiple units of floor. So that larger lot, we're just about there at that 6,000-square-foot mark, about 100, 100 square feet shy. But in my opinion, it's close. The other aspect is it's an existing structure. So there's a lot of current conservation, conservation of resources in this adaptive reuse project. Those are two strong planning principles. And reoccupying the existing structure, in my opinion, is another physical attribute of the existing property that make it particularly suitable. As was mentioned, there was a permit, there was a four-story concept with this adaptive reuse. That's not with this project. And that's important because I think in terms of consistency with the zoning, four stories is permitted. But we're keeping the building as is, three stories, so there's no impact. A couple other things, just with respect to the suitability. We are along West Side Avenue. Avenue, further south begins the Neighborhood Commercial District, I'll leave this off for now, yeah, further south begins the Neighborhood Commercial District, and I'll pull up the zoning map just for reference.
It's not up there, though.
It came off.
There you go.
So, how do you zoom in? I'm not a... So, just for visual, I think it's helpful for the board that you can see with respect to the zoning context, West Side Avenue in this area, in terms of zones and other uses, the university district obviously encompasses some of the university properties, but further south along West Side Avenue introduces the N C District, which has a lot of commercial uses, which are more intense in terms of property, there are some residential along this stretch, but in theory, this is a mixed-use corridor, and where, as you see right in the black, and I'll hover my cursor over it, right at the north end, again, still in the university district, but in close proximity to mixed uses. There obviously is the R three in the area, that's the reference we were making with respect to permitted multifamily, and then residential in some of the internal connector streets. To me, that says that it's an appropriate use for multifamily, just given the context of more intense mixed-use properties. We did discuss, and I think the board planner did review some of the other multifamily properties in the area, so it is consistent with other multifamilies that already exist in this area, again, not only in the university district, but in the surrounding neighborhood. For those reasons, I think it's a contextual argument for particular suitability, there's aspects about the property that lend itself for the particular suitable use, we're not introducing vehicles, so there's no added vehicle impact, it's a very walkable neighborhood, given there's commercial, there's some activity along West Side Avenue, and there's availability of mass transit in the area. Shifting focus to the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any detriment to the public welfare, specifically because dormitories are housing, what we're proposing is housing. It's very simple, although by definition, we need this use variance, I do think we've taken time to understand the community's needs, prior iterations were a little bit more intense, this iteration is just residential, there's no commercial element to it, there's no four-story, and we've worked with the community to address some of the architectural design to it, of it. Again, not introducing any sort of ground floor off-street parking, in my opinion, is the best way to go, because you're not dealing with curb cuts, you're not dealing with tenants who expect ownership of vehicles, so there's gonna be a lot more pedestrian and bicycle activity, which the supporting street network can accommodate. With respect to any impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, the university district was created to allow for space in the city for dormitories to support the university. That demand is not here today, so this application, while it needs relief because it goes against the policy that was set up a while ago, in my opinion, doesn't create any sort of impairment, the university has sold these properties at their discretion, and I think that this adaptive reuse is a very appropriate conversion from, again, one housing to another. It does create a balance of affordable housing, a balance of housing in the city, that's one of the city's master plan objectives. If it wasn't a use variance, if we were in the R one, and the board knows that the policy has been changed, we would be using the affordable housing overlay. We would not have needed a density variance, it would be essentially a D variance free application, considering that we're in the U University District, and there's no mention of residential uses, we need the use variance. So we are complying with the I Z O, with the two affordable housing units, essentially getting us to the same outcome as if we were in the R one, which is, for all intents and purposes, less intense. That's my planning testimony, I hope I hit on much of the important facts, so.
And that completes our presentation.
Okay. Is there anyone in, from the public that would like to comment? Can you please come to the mic?
Shireen McCormack, S H I R I N M A C C O R M A C K.
Okay, you can...
Okay. My name is Shireen McCormack, I'm the president of McGinley Square Community Board, and I wanted to speak about this project. Things started off not good. These guys started working in July without first saying hello to you or to my neighbors, and meeting with the four active neighborhood groups in the area, but there's good news. When they eventually did, we had a productive exchange. After our September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, they made a few modest facade improvements and changed wooden planters to more enduring ones. After our January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting, they added another planter or two and made them all bigger. We asked for the entryways to be made, the focal points rather than the corners of the building, with added emphasis at the entries and the big empty spaces above the entry canopies. They didn't do all that, but they did include the canopies, the lighting, and the signage. We asked for color exploration, and they made some slight color and texture edits. They met our request to move the street-facing railing segment from the sidewalk tree guards, so parked cars wouldn't hit them when they opened their doors. We want to improve the neighborhood, so we asked about southwest corner windows to be added to improve the form, function, and property value for the owner, and for those residents that are gonna come to enjoy the sun-filled corner units. They chose to pass on that. They also passed on the request for a storm-water mitigating green rooftop, since there is excessive lot coverage, we had asked for that, and the green roof had been a well-light component in the former owner's plans, but they agreed instead to protect the large London Plains Sycamore tree on Glenwood, and try to protect the other smaller sidewalk trees that there are two of, planted in twenty twenty-three, and still plant the required six trees. They also omitted a roof deck, which my neighbors that live close by really appreciated. The owner shared that they bought this building because it had new plumbing and electrical and required very little investment, so accordingly, we only asked for very minimal requests, such as a modest roofline cornice that we thought would look really nice, could that be added, and a curb cut for easy deliveries and to keep the traffic flow moving. They responded that would be up to the city, so is it possible to have that considered?
Thirty seconds.
There's a lot to like about this building, the exterior facade is amazingly improved, it's an adaptive reuse, and the building will be revitalized, and once again, used as housing rather than sit as an empty dorm. We like the two affordable units, we like the same density, we like the planters, the common spaces of the mailroom, and the laundry and bike racks in the basement, we like the new heating and cooling. You can't always get the moon, but it can't hurt to reach for the stars, so we are curious about an aesthetic cornice and functional delivery curb cut, the reno is reasonable, and so is our community, and we support the project.
That's Tom, exactly.
Thank you. Okay, there seems to be no one else here, so commissioners, do you have any questions for any of Mr. Harrington's professionals? Okay, then, let's hear from the staff.
So, staff submitted a report dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, outlining six recommended conditions for approval. Is the applicant amenable to these conditions?
Yes, they would all be acceptable.
Certainly. Staff substantiates Mr. Height's testimony as, you know, outlining positive and negative criteria for a D one use variance here. I mean, as you said, it's part of, the lot is functionally part of a residential neighborhood, and a residential use would be a natural fit here. It's really, it's frankly separated from the existing university campus, and the university zone over on the north side of Glenwood was, you know, never really realized as fully intended, and there's actually tenants of the master plan that involve, you know, reexamining that area and allowing more flexibility of uses over there. With that, staff recommends approval conditions.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any other questions, or no? So, can I, I'm asking for a motion to vote on case Z two zero two four dash zero zero four five. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, may I have a motion to approve case Z two zero two four dash zero zero four five?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zabliki?
I vote aye, and I would just encourage developers to just have more of a dialogue with the neighbors if possible, on some of their concerns with the aesthetics, if possible, and not a major inconvenience, I just think it'd be good for that to happen.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Coyle?
Those cornices sound really nice, so I agree with Mrs. Zabliki, maybe we could do something with those cornices for the building?
Well, that, we looked at that, we...
Okay, you could talk about that, they could talk about, okay, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Forty-five.
Do we have any resolutions to memorialize? Okay.
We have a few, ready? The first resolution to memorialize is case Z twenty-three dash zero one six, Caroline Sutton, it was for C variances at three thirteen Varick Street. That case was heard October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Wow.
And present, the chair that evening was Sonia Arroyo, also present were Commissioners Shadid, Allen, Patel, excuse me, Patel, Brown, Boyle, and Zabliki. That passed, six in favor, and Ms. Brown abstained. So all in favor of memorializing that is?
Aye.
Aye.
The next was heard on May ninth, twenty twenty-four, that was case Z twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one zero. The applicant was Three Thirty-One SIP LLC, the address was Three Twenty-Nine SIP Avenue, and it was an amendment to a preliminary and final site plan for Three Twenty-Nine SIP Avenue. Present that evening was Chair Coyle, Vice Chair Arroyo, Allen, Barron, Boyle, Shadid, and Zabliki, and that passed, seven in favor and none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that is?
Aye. Aye.
And the next one was, occurred on February sixth, twenty twenty-five, that was case Z twenty-four dash zero zero six five. The applicant was Virgin, and then A D E F, I wouldn't know how to say that, Virgin or Def?
Virgin.
Virgin, V I R G I N, and then A D E V, I think I said F, I meant V. That was a C variance in design waivers, here we go, and we started at one seventy-seven Wilkerson Avenue. There were six commissioners that evening, Chair Coyle, Vice Chair Arroyo, Shadid, Burns, Allen, and Barron, and that passed, four in favor, two were opposed to that, the two opposed were Chair Coyle and Commissioner Allen, that was that design waiver that was already done, and then came back, and, well, we know the story. Okay, the next two, all in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
The next one occurred on March sixth, twenty twenty-five, that was Z twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five eight. The applicant was Wonderful Seventy-Eight Storms LLC, that was the address as well, Seventy-Eight Storms. It was an approval of an amendment to the previously approved preliminary and final major site plan approval with variances and conditions, that passed, six in favor and none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next one also occurred on March sixth, same six commissioners, same six in favor and none opposed. This case was Z twenty-two dash zero seven eight, the applicant was One Thirty-eight dash One Forty Glenwood LLC, it was an application for preliminary and major, and final major site plan approval with C and D variances, as I said, that passed, six in favor and none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that is?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.